Thank you very much. I have a little script I'd like to read here for the record. I'd like to welcome everyone here who is attending the hearing today. The purpose of our hearing is to consider the abandonment of Scott County Ditches 5, 7, 8, and 12 pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 103E dot eight one one. This is a combined hearing. The board will consider each proposed abandonment individually and will take public comment for each county ditch separately. For convenience and at staff's request, we will consider the drainage systems in the following order, ditch seven, eight, 12, and then five. The order of business for this hearing will follow the agenda as follows. Mr. Kolb, our Drainage Attorney, which is in traffic running late, but will be here. Mr. Kolb, the Drainage Authority's Attorney, will explain the process which has brought us to this public hearing, the purpose of this hearing, and the decision standard to be applied by the Drainage Authority. Following Mr. Kolb, the county staff will review the notices given for these hearings. Following review of the notices given, the county staff will present information regarding each drainage system, including where available, information about the drainage system, the function, the original intent, the history, the utility, regulatory restriction, maintenance, and practicality of restoration. Following the staff presentation for each drainage system, the hearing will be open to public comment for the system presented. Following their receipt of public comment, the board will decide whether to close public comment or to leave the comment period open for submission of additional information. Our decision must be based on the evidence presented in determining whether A) the drainage system serves any useful purpose to any affected property, B) the drainage system is of public benefit and utility, and C) restoration of the system is practical. If you would like to make comment when the public comment period is open, please wait to be recognized by the board chair and myself. When recognized, please state your name and address for the record, and also if you are a benefited owner or not. It will also be helpful for you to identify the property that is subject to the drainage system by section, township, and range. If you have a specific question concerning the abandonment, we may ask our viewers, legal counsel, or staff to respond. Are there any additional remarks from members here before we begin? All right. So, in the absence of our attorney who is still in traffic, Chris Logge, why don't you give us a little bit about the process and the purpose?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I am here to inform you about the notice that has been given about this public hearing. The notice of the public hearing was published in the Star Tribune for three consecutive weeks, and letters were also mailed individually to the benefited owners along each ditch. I think we can start with the presentations while we wait for Mr. Kolb.
Yep. Oh, you're right. You know what? Look at this. Thank you so much. We've gone right into the presentation. I still need to go through item 2.1. We need to approve the minutes of the March 18th, 2025 ditch board meetings. Thank you, Commissioner Weckman-Brecke.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Who is all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Let's move on to item number three, adopt resolution number 2025 dash one one six, setting a public hearing for June 17th, 2025 at 8:00 a.m. to allow comment on the abandonment of County Drainage Ditch Number Four.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, we're going to move to our presentations since we're still looking for... All right. Just taking away 4.1. We're going to conduct a public hearing at 8:00 a.m. to receive information regarding the abandonment of County Drainage Ditch Number Seven and receive public comment. But first, the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you can see on the screen, I have a map up of County Ditch Seven, and that's the first one that we're going to discuss today. Ditch Seven was constructed in 1917, and it lies entirely within Helena Township. The majority of this ditch is located in a wetland. There's very little known about this ditch. In fact, for many years, the county did not even recognize this as a drainage ditch. There's been no maintenance on County Ditch Seven since it was constructed. There's been no calls or requests for maintenance on this ditch. There's been no maintenance fund on this ditch. So, there really has been no activity since construction. I think the original purpose of the ditch was to drain Serbenka marsh in order to make it, make the land better use for agricultural farming. This ditch was considered somewhat of a failure since it was constructed because that original purpose didn't happen, and it remained a wetland. So, in an effort to get owner feedback on what they would like to have happen with County Ditch Seven, we did send out letters in October of 2024 to all the benefited owners. The results of those mailings, the mailing had information about the ditch as far as that there's really been nothing, no maintenance done on the ditch since it's been constructed. And then it gave them an option if they would be in favor of abandoning the ditch, or if they would rather have us take a look at redetermination of benefits and also maintenance to bring the ditch back to its original constructed state. Of the responses that we received, 79% of the owners voted to abandon the ditch. One owner voted for a redetermination of benefits and maintenance, and three owners did not respond. So, we have a 79% approval rating for the abandonment of this ditch. With that, I'll stand for questions from the board.
Thank you. Any questions for Chris on ditch number seven? Right, but is there any questions here?
Mr. Chair, I just was trying to, and Chris, remind myself, looks like 15 benefited properties and 19 benefited owners. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, the 79% that was of the benefited owners, not the properties.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
All right. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? All right. Public comment is open. If you would like to address the board, please follow up to the podium, state your name, address, whether you're a benefited owner or not. We would love to take your comment on ditch number seven.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I do want to remind you, there were two publicly submitted responses to Chris. She received those via email. So, just...
Those will be part of the record.
Please.
Yes. I think, was there a total of three? I have three, two on seven, and one on 12. That's all we have for...
Publicly submitted in writing.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. So, members, you have notices of two from number seven. All right. Well...
Mr. Chair, I do have a comment here.
Sure.
On, I think it was, one of these, comments on ditch number seven, the person is under the impression, I think, that if it's abandoned, that they can't do any work on the ditch, which is not true. They can do work, maintain, and whatever they would like to do, but it's not formally going to be done as a group or...
Organization.
Organization. Okay. So, is there anyone else who would care to speak on County Ditch Seven, or does anyone have any written materials that they would like to submit? Otherwise, no further testimony?
Mr. Chair, I just want to clarify something Commissioner Olber said. You mean they could clean the ditch on their property, but if it's abandoned, there's no rights on anyone else's property. So, just wanted to make sure that nobody is misconstruing your comments. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. On your property.
Someone else come in? Any further?
And, Mr. Chair, I do want to address Commissioner Olber's comment. Even if there's a blockage downstream of them, there is a right to go in and make sure that that obstruction is taken care of as well. Even though the ditch would be abandoned, there is no right to block the ditch at your property or downstream of it.
I do believe we did talk about this at one of the other ditch board meetings. It was a DNR or a state statute, I think someone had brought up. So, yes, because it's being abandoned does not mean that you can just do whatever you want to do and...
Correct, correct.
Okay. So, reading. There's no further testimony from public related to County Ditch Seven?
Mr. Chair, I will make a motion to close the public hearing on ditch seven.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Public comment is closed on ditch seven.
Miss, oh, you ready for a motion, or?
Well, we, is there, I'm still kind of lingering to see if we, do we have an...
Right. If you're comfortable to go forward with your motion, you can do that. If you'd rather wait for Mr. Kolb to be here, we can do that as well. I can move on to the next ditch. It's up to you.
I think we can add seven.
This one seems...
Let her go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the findings and order approving the abandonment of County Ditch Seven as requested by petition and recommended and presented by staff, and adopt the findings and order as presented, reviewed, and reviewed today.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Moving on, let's see. We're going to move to 4.3, conduct a public hearing to receive information on the abandonment of Scott County Drainage Ditch Number Eight and receive public comment. But before that, Chris Logge, thank you. Welcome again. Ditch Number Eight, presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I have a map up on the screen of County Ditch Eight. County Ditch Eight was constructed in 1916. It's entirely located within Cedar Lake Township. Currently, County Ditch Eight is mainly residential in nature. Most of the acreage along Eight has been platted into subdivision. So, the purpose of County Ditch Eight when it was constructed was for drainage for agricultural use. Ditch Eight has basically lost most of its purpose for existence because the majority of the property has transitioned to residential in nature. The system's also mostly flat or part of a flooded basin. It's had limited maintenance over its life. The maintenance that we have the records for is basically beaver dam removals. It averages about one a year. There's also been some snag removals in portion of the ditch and a small cleanout. But in the last several years, the majority has been just beaver dam removal. Again, we sent out letters to benefited owners. This ditch actually was brought to the attention of the former ditch inspector by one of the benefited owners who was interested in having this ditch abandoned. And so, as part of the effort with the other three ditches that we were looking at, we agreed to send out letters to landowners to see what their wishes were for County Ditch Eight. So, County Ditch Eight has 26 benefited properties and 46 benefited owners. Forty-one of those 46 people voted to abandon the ditch, which is 89%. We had two owners who voted for redetermination of benefits and maintenance, which is a 4%. However, on the survey that was sent, the note was written from one of those owners that they weren't necessarily in favor of a redetermination and maintenance. They just wanted to be sure that someone couldn't block the ditch downstream. And then there were three owners along this ditch that did not respond, so that's 7%. But again, we have a pretty overwhelming majority, 89%, who wish to abandon this ditch. With that, I'll stand for questions.
All right. Members, any questions for...
Can I ask, so who's been moving the beaver dams at this point and paying for it, and who's going to do that in the future?
That would be up to the landowners along the ditch. The county would, if it's going forward to abandon the ditch, the county would be completely removed from any of the process.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. On this ditch, it looks like there is a positive balance in the account. There was a lien in 2022. If this ditch is abandoned, what happens to that positive balance in the account?
So, according to Mr. Kolb, the balance in the ditch account first would go towards any expenses that have been incurred to hold any of the meetings or public hearings regarding this ditch. If there is a fund left after that, it goes into the county general fund.
Thank you.
Any further questions before we open up the public comment? Otherwise...
Motion to open the public hearing, or?
Second.
Motion and a second to open the public comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Public comment is open. If you would like to address the ditch board on ditch number eight, please make your way to the podium. Thank you. Please state your name, address, and if you're a benefited owner or not, please, for the record.
Good morning. I'm Jay Kalgusson. I'm a benefited owner, 1798 Joel D. Lane. I also represent the Country Knolls Homeowners Association, which is 15 lots, of which the majority of them have County Ditch access and are benefited owners. I just wanted to say, I'm one of the ones that called in a beaver dam request, partly because I didn't know what to do with it. But I would absolutely do that on my own. Again, we have the capabilities, and really it was, I called the county to see what to do, and they said, we'll send somebody out. So, I think the maintenance, the pieces that we've discussed as an association, a part of our planning, maintenance, usage, has been, this is a wetland, it's a butt's a wetland. There's very little use of the ditch from east to west throughout our, you know, 15 properties. We unanimously voted in favor of abandoning the ditch. We don't see any value, again, to its usage, to its cost, to any maintenance. We all feel very comfortable in our abilities to maintain. I know there was a slight cleanup a few years ago that we reassessed, like a $700 or something to our property taxes. Again, we're able-bodied homeowners. We purchased outlots. You know, my lot myself is 9.8 acres. I understand that there's work involved with the purchase of a lot. We are in a development. I have neighbors on both sides. This is a cul-de-sac, a budding a wetland. So, our recommendation to you would be to proceed with approval of the abandonment, putting the onus back on the landowners, and giving us the rights to manage it ourselves. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anyone else on ditch number eight?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion and a, oh, no, okay, we're going to hold that.
If I'm sitting there for a while.
Sorry. I thought other people were going to talk, and I was waiting. So, my name is Glenn Newberger. Okay. Can I go to the middle one?
What's that?
That's the one. Okay. Thanks. So, my name is Glenn, I'm a benefited owner. I actually own three properties along the ditch. And, you know, as Chris said, you know, 89% of the benefited owners approve abandonment. There's also 58% by benefited acreage that approved it. So, both majorities support abandonment. One of the things that I did, because I've heard so many, so much commentary on the ditch itself. So, in February, I decided to actually walk the ditch. So, I walked it from east to west, the whole length. And I did it in February because it was cold, and you can actually walk it. And the most revealing discovery was, in the center of the ditch, there's actually no ditch. If you walk in the middle of the ditch, and that's what this picture is, it's simply you're standing in the middle of the marsh. You're standing in the middle of the flood basin, and there's no depression, there's no channel, there's no sign of any excavation. There's nothing that would suggest that there's a ditch, and any maintenance has been done for any length of time. If you go to either end, you might see, you know, evidence of that. Where I live and the Stupkas and others live, you'll see a channel, but it's deteriorating. The embankments are falling in. And if you go way to the west, you'll actually see what looks like a creek with slope slide. But in the middle, there's nothing. There's absolutely nothing. You're standing in the middle of the marsh or the flood plain. And so, that's what this picture is. So, I'm standing in the middle of the flood plain, looking at it, and tell me where the ditch is. You can't see anything. There's nothing visible, nothing evident. But I'm in full favor of banning the ditch, like the vast majority of the owners. And there are a number of reasons I could make that comment, but in practice, the ditch has been abandoned. It's been abandoned for decades. There's no real useful purpose left of the ditch. And the cost to improve this, as the county has said in the letter they sent to us, is several hundred thousand dollars. And you know what? I believe them. The redetermination of benefits alone, hiring a consultant, going through that activity, is going to be expensive. My guess is you guys have that experience with ditch 10 and others. And then to excavate this ditch, to return it, you can only imagine the cost. Like, I wonder if several hundred thousand dollars is sufficient, okay? And I look at it, and I say, what's the value of it? As people have indicated, you know, the use has changed. It's mostly homes now. I have three properties. It's a wetlands. I recognize the wetlands. I bought it that way. But it's vastly home development, and the farms of, you know, years past have passed, and it really is no practical use for that anymore. And if you look at, like, what people may surmise or state as, like, an actual benefit, I don't think is really a benefit. In fact, the one sentence I wrote at the end was, like, "No significant cost for redetermination of benefits in repairing this ditch farers away any benefit that someone may argue or what may be realized." I just don't think you'll see it. I just don't think anybody could argue that you could expend that kind of money and get any benefit back from it. Thanks for putting the picture up.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Ditch Eight. Okay. Yeah, please, please.
Come on up.
Please.
Good morning. My name is Tim Gates. My address is 27253 Fergus Avenue. I've lived on the, if you could put the other one back up, I live on the north side of the ditch up in this area here. It's a lot of mine. I've lived there for over 40 years. And I've paid, not every year, but whenever they felt like it, I've been assessed for maintenance on this ditch. And in the 40 years, I have not seen any maintenance on the ditch. And what is the most irritating is that the outlet of the ditch up here, if you look at the elevation, is higher than the majority of the ditch going east and west, meaning that no water can run out of that ditch unless it goes up and over the level of private property. Now, what that means is if we have severe rains, the water level comes up, and it runs over that, and then it recedes. Now, it's a temporary wetland in nature's eye and in the people that understand that water does not flow uphill. And I would very much like to see the ditch abandoned and returned to its natural state. That's all.
Thank you very much. And it sounds like there may be more. Now's a perfect opportunity to come on up and comment on ditch number eight. Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Mark Stupka. I'm at 26991 Newport Avenue. As far as this ditch is concerned, I am one of the people that are benefiting off this ditch in more ways than one. If you give me permission, I will bring these to you.
Can you put them on the thing there, and everyone can see them?
Viewer, viewer.
Yeah, there's a camera there.
Well, if you can do that for me, I wouldn't have known what I'm doing here.
Chris, do you want to hit the...
Don't go away either, because we got a few pictures here. Yes. Okay, this is a photo of my property, and this is what my property looks like when this ditch is not open. My property is prone to flooding here. This photo was taken in the early 80s. In the 80s, this ditch was cleaned out. I was a young man at the time. This ditch was cleaned out recently, I think it was around 2019. Anyway, our end of the ditch, I'm waiting, was it 19 that we did it?
I don't know. It's between 2010 and 2020.
Okay. Is this the same picture from the same spot?
Yes.
Why don't you show them where your property is?
Our property is on this, and we're on the far end of the ditch.
We're right here.
On the far east end of the ditch.
Yeah, go ahead.
Right here.
They can't see that?
We can't see you pointing.
Right here.
Right here. So, this property here.
Yeah.
That's the one? Okay.
And we're, this is a photo of after the ditch was cleaned. Just recently. Yes. And then, we are benefiting by this, as you can see through this photo, that we are cutting the grassland down here. I don't even know how many acres it is. I think it's somewheres around 20 to 40. And we use the hay to feed some of our own cattle, and I also sell the hay. Once again, just proof that we're doing this ourselves. More photos of, the stuff on the left here has already been cut. We've moved over to the right. We can get anywhere from 300 to 500 bales a year off this ditch, round bales. Here we are cutting.
And we're selling.
And here we're selling. Here's photos of the hay that has been baled.
So, basically, we're getting revenue off of this.
We're getting revenue off this ditch.
What's going to happen to us?
Yeah.
If it's abandoned.
If it's abandoned, I'm going to lose money.
And he's right. It's not worth $700 to keep this ditch open.
If it's abandoned, I'm going to lose money. If we don't abandon this ditch, it's going to cost me money. Either way, I'm a loser. That's the best way I could put it.
We'd get hurt either way.
More photos of baling process. And here is a full photo.
Even Glenn's property.
Even Mr. Newberger's property was cut here at this time.
Yes.
I guess my questions are, one of the questions I had was, and I forgot to ask, Chris, was that, just, let's assume that this abandonment process does not proceed, and we go through the right of benefit determination and everything here. Everybody gets assessed. Everybody's mad, mad at me. Back to the matter is...
Well, we're target number one. You might be target number two. But if we go through the right of benefits and everything, and say that, and we get it all settled, what's not to say, that somebody can come in here and say, the day after it's settled, they petition to abandon the ditch again? How often can we, are we going to have to go through this process on this ditch abandonment? Somebody needs to tell me, if this is going to continually happen, I'm wasting my time standing here trying to stop this abandonment process.
I'm looking down to my right. Welcome, Mr. Kolb.
Thank you, and I apologize for my delay. And thank you to the staff for putting the nice signs up that helped me get here officially. Sir, if more than 51% of your neighbors who are assessed for benefits on this drainage system petition for abandonment, the board has no choice but to at least consider the petition.
Yeah, that's what I understand.
So, this could happen over and over and over again. The difference being that if a redetermination of benefits is completed, there is a high likelihood that substantial additional lands will be added to the system. I'm not aware of the last time the benefits were determined, but I know this ditch dates back to 1916. I think it's an original construction. And if benefits have not been redetermined since that time, there have been so many changes in the law that define out what constitutes a benefit on a drainage system that there would be more properties. So, the threshold for getting to that 51% after a redetermination of benefits would probably be higher, but it could recur in front of the board over and over again, depending on how many petitions they receive.
So, it's a time.
I don't have, I can't give you that judgment. That's your judgment to make, but it...
Well, that's what you're telling me.
There's nothing that prevents the process from recurring.
And a clarification, there was a timeline on an annual basis, so if you petition, here we are, 2025?
Commissioner, the statute is silent as to how frequently this can occur. I would get the sense that the board would think that its decisions on day X might be durable based on the conditions that it was considering on day X, but in day X plus three years, everything could change. That could, those changes could be sparked by regulatory changes at the state level that make it even more difficult to work on this drainage system.
If the ditch is abandoned, and we do our own cleanout, is there going to be... If the ditch is abandoned and we do our own clean out, is there going to be an engineer from someplace doing a survey to make sure that the clean out is done proper and no modifications?
If the ditch is abandoned, it regur, reverts to its original status, which was, would be public water. And so it would be protected under the state laws protecting public waters, which means it would require a DNR permit. The DNR allows permit for the, for the restoration or removal of debris and other obstructions in public waters, so long as you don't exceed the, I guess, natural stream bed, which at this point it's modified, obviously. So you would be required to comply with those, with those, those permit requirements. We, whether an engineer was involved or not, I couldn't tell you. When we do work as the Drainage Authority, and I'm using the collective "we" here, we're required under most cases to actually have an engineer that, to let a minimum go out and stake grades and limits of, limits of construction and those sorts of things. But a private party can get a permit to do that. The challenge you would have as private individuals is you've got to cross now a whole bunch of private lands and you'd have to get permission or some kind of authorization from your neighbors to be able to enter your, their land to perform that work. But it is, it is possible and perfectly legal to do that work in a natural water course or a public water in this instance, post-abandonment. The coordination challenge is just a little bit more difficult.
The buffers go to fifty feet versus sixteen?
That is unknown at this time, I'll tell you, because, because again, in the inventory, this is listed on the inventory map as a heavy dashed line, which indicates that had it not been a public ditch, it would have been inventoried as public water. Public waters do require a fifty-foot buffer. And the majority of that buffer on this, on this system in particular, based on the pictures I saw, is probably already occupied by the significant growth of trees and stuff that's in that area. So it may, the buffer may not have any consequence on you, but I, you'd have to make the measurements to know. But it is true that the buffer requirement would increase under statute one oh three F point four eight, if anybody's curious, up to fifty feet.
And you touched on public waters. So that means that the public can be on it or?
No.
Who controls it? How is it, how is it controlled?
Public water is just a regulatory designation by the state. There was an inventory process in the late seventies and early eighties, which designated certain waters, water basins and wetlands, water courses, water basins and wetlands, as having some public benefit. And that inventory process resulted in a series of orders enlisted at the DNR level. It does not confer any right of the public to access the lands adjacent to that. But as with any flowing water system that's on the inventory, if you can float a canoe down it, or you can walk in it, people can walk in it. It has that status today, actually.
That ditch does?
Yes.
They can't access it from private property though, right?
That is correct. They would be trespassing in order to access it, but if they can.
They have to be able to be on public property to access.
And their feet have to remain wet. Yes, sir.
Is there any place that they?
How about jumping off a road ditch by where the culvert is?
They could get, they could access the ditch at that point.
Yeah.
Is there such a, such an access on this ditch?
Not that I'm, well, it crosses public roadways, so at some point there's public right of way that intersects with the alignment of the, of the water course.
Is there a crappie hole out there you're trying to protect or?
Is there one?
We, we're up in the back here and there's some nice woods back there. And I'm concerned about hunting.
Yeah.
So forth and so on. But according to him, if they leave the water on the ditch, they go on my property, you know, but then there's waterfall also, but there's none back there. So that's what I was concerned about.
Very common that people, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, very common that people will post on the ditch bank for that very reason.
Which we have our property posted. Yeah. So, but I'm just wanting to clarify.
Yeah.
I can't, I know I've got more questions, but I just can't think of what they were. I guess I'm going to have to badger Chris in the future.
Well, I'm going to ask again for any more comments, so if it comes to you, you can think about it, because right now we've got a, we have a motion in the second, which I think is still viable to close the public comment, but we held off if someone wanted to speak, so, so you got to come up to the, so we can get on the record with the.
So, these are, these guys are my neighbors, they're my friends. Right? There's no question of that. In fact, they've harvested on my property.
Yep.
And there's no ill will. But there's, there's something that we need to understand. That ditch has been abandoned. The experience that you guys have right now is based most on precipitation. The amount of water that you get in the season is going to find whether you can harvest hay or not down there. There is no ditch. In the center part of this, there's no ditch. West of you guys, there's no ditch.
Yeah.
And the fundamental question before this board is, are we going to spend, and I'm sorry to say this, are we going to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to be able to harvest ten or twenty thousand dollars with the hay? That's not a practical thing to impose on twenty-six or more.
So we have hardships here.
So.
About that.
That's just.
Mr. Chair.
No, that's good comment.
Yes.
Can I ask a question? And maybe, John, you can, could you guys get, could they get wetland credits for turning this into a wetland?
Under the current regulations, because it was previously drained by the public drainage system, and it does have, again, I don't know if it has a row cropping history or not, if it's only been forage ground, if it is possible to enhance the hydrology on that site, and it already is wetland, I guess if I'm looking at this map correctly, it looks like it's maybe a type one wet meadow or maybe a type two seasonally, you know, seasonally flooded. But if you can enhance the, if you can enhance the hydrology on that, you could possibly get it enrolled in various programs for compensation, including wetland banking. But that's something that there's, it's technical, Commissioner, and obviously I wouldn't know whether it, it's actually eligible or not, but I've seen wetland banks and other programs that provide compensation to landowners on similar ground.
Okay, and I get ten percent for bringing that up?
I got ten bucks.
I'm kidding.
I'm kidding. The, the right of benefit survey. I've talked to the community people about this right of benefit survey, but it just seems like it's an open checkbook here. When we do this survey, I mean, is there any way for anybody to tell us exactly what this is going to, or have an idea of what this is going to cost? I mean, when I go buy something, I kind of have an idea of what I'm buying and what I'm paying for it. I just don't throw my checkbook at them and say, fill out the check blank.
Yeah, we don't, we don't give, we don't give blank checks. We don't give blank checks.
Mr. Chair, I, I think the answer to that question would be if, if we decide not to abandon this ditch and then as the ditch authority, we go through the process of figuring out our responsibilities to redetermine benefits and, and get the ditch up to whatever standard we're required to, then we would do, we'd have to go out and get a bid, and that's when we'd find out the estimate. So we're not at that point, but yes, usually we find out an estimate of how much that's going to cost before we start. Just, that's not what's on the table right now. We're giving the estimate based on most recent work. And the redetermination of benefits in our recent experience has been very expensive, and I think Mr. Cole can talk about why it is so expensive. But that's, that's, I think, our heartburn up here. If we go down that path of the potential cost to the landowners that Mr. Cole can verify has to be assessed out to those landowners.
Basically, we have two people that are benefiting from this, us and Mr. Jeff Durson over there's property, this south of us. We're farming it.
Well, that's just it. We're farming and nobody else is on the ditch anymore.
Yeah, but Jeff, Jeff is too hot. He doesn't get any real benefit because he's all grown up too hot. You guys are one that's farming.
He should go bother.
You know, give us a.
Well, see, that's, you know, that's fine and dandy, but he has the option right now. If it's flooded, he doesn't.
So any discussion we need to have at, at the microphones, we have it on the record, but, Mr. Cole, if you could just give us, you know, run us through kind of that process and what that looks like. We've got some thumbnail estimates, which is all they are, and that's all they're presented as being, is some thumbnail estimates based on where we're at in the process. So maybe just, we'll back the train up just a little bit. Where we're at, how we got here, what we would need to do going from here, the processes, as Commissioner Winkman-Brecke talked about, how we would be getting more bids, but we're at the point where we're just talking thumbnails, and does that make sense? The vote is in, both benefit owner-wise and acreage-wise, but if, if you could just give us kind of those, some of those summary statements, it might be helpful here.
Well, let me break your compound question down, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Somebody has to do it.
And then, and then if possible, just remind everybody when you're, you're speaking up here, please direct all of your comments to the board chair and, and make sure that the board chair has cleared you to speak in advance. That'll keep everything flowing properly and we won't have a lot of interruptions. So, well, let's start with, kind of the first question is, what would it cost, you know, if, if the ditch was retained as part of the public drainage system, what would it cost first to do a redetermination of benefits? So the, the challenge here is that the statute requires us to appoint viewers. Viewers are three disinterested people that have some skill in doing this, and the board's familiar with different viewing groups around the state. Most viewing groups are going to charge based on the amount of acres in the watershed, and they're going to, they're going to have it be some charge between, I think between three and a quarter and five dollars an acre, depending on the viewing team. So this watershed is actually quite large, and it's substantially larger than the currently benefited area. And they are required by statute to view for benefits in the entire watershed area. So if this watershed area was ten thousand acres, you could count on just the redetermination of benefits being at least forty thousand dollars in cost. That's based on what we know from recent redeterminations of benefits in the area. Mr. Chair, can I entertain a question if he has one while I'm going here?
Absolutely, please.
Sir.
You said forty thousand. Now, is this for everybody on the ditch or is this for me?
No, the way that it works then is that after the redetermination is completed, the viewers will assign an economic value to the benefits across the ditch. And that economic value can be based on two different things. It can be based on the ditch providing an outlet that allows you to use your land in a more efficient or economical way. That's an actual market value increase. And they do that based on classification of the agricultural ground and other grounds in the area, other lands in the area. The other, the other basis of benefit is if your land, even if it's higher than the ditch and some distance away, if it's been modified from a pre-settlement condition to accelerate runoff or deliver sediment to lower portions of the watershed, that's also under law considered to be a benefit. So even your neighbor that's so high that doesn't need the drainage, that person's going to get pulled into this process as well. Ultimately, all of those parcel values get put into a large spreadsheet and every owner ends up with a percentage of responsibility on the ditch. So if I have five percent of the total benefits, then every dollar that gets spent, I have to pay five cents. And so the cost of the redetermination itself, the forty thousand dollars, just using the example, gets distributed according to those percentages. So for some people, that, that could be a few thousand dollars, and for some people, that could be a few dollars. It just depends on what their percentage of total benefits are. And you can imagine a larger lot with a lot of economic activity that's being facilitated by the ditch is going to have a higher economic benefit than a smaller lot that maybe just has a little garden plot, a lawn and, and the rooftop and the driveway. So they, they, they put it down to that level of detail. So that's how that would get distributed. But then on top of it all, the board would have to look at ditch eight and its current configuration and whether or not it's in need of repair. Ditch eight has a very contentious history. There's a point in time where there were competing petitions, one for repair and one for abandonment, and the board kind of said, well, what the heck do we do here? We got half of the constituents want X and half want Y, and so they basically did nothing and opted instead for the regime of this very minor periodic maintenance, just when there's a problem in, in the space, which landowners candidly could be doing by themselves. So there's going to be a little bit of cost in evaluating the ditch, that'd be engineering, so there's cost there. If we're missing critical records and the other, in, the other unique characteristic of ditch eight as an example is that it passes through a lot of wetlands and waters area, there's public waters implications, there's a lot of different things that are of consequence to the cost, because we're going to have to comply with all of the regulatory requirements, wetlands, public waters, maybe, maybe at the federal level, there'll be some things as well. So we would have to go through this entire process before we scooped out a spoonful, spoonful of dirt in the ditch. And all of that cost then gets put onto, by the way the statute's written, onto those benefited, those landowners that were determined to be benefited. And that takes out of the equation somebody that might appeal and say, I'm not benefited, and they want to now go to district court to argue about that. That's also a cost of the ditch system. So, so that's kind of what happens if the ditch is retained. As has been pointed out for ditch eight in particular, we do have affirmative action by a majority of the owners of the property and by the owners of a majority of the property that are currently benefited to take this off of the rolls, basically abandon it. And that process, all it does is it takes it out of the responsibility of this county board as a drainage authority, and it takes it out of the Drainage Code, which is chapter one oh three E of Minnesota statutes, and puts it back into the hands of the private parties that it traverses, one. Subject to, number two, the, the regulatory interests of the state of Minnesota. But everything that we've seen across the state is that after an abandonment, if private landowners can cooperate and, and coordinate, they can get those permits and remove those immediate obstructions to the drainage system that are causing them problems, which no longer a drainage system, but to the public water or the water course that are causing them problems. Now, that answered a portion of your question, Mr. Chair, but if there's more, you're probably going to have to refresh my memory on what it was.
No, that, I just wanted to kind of go back, so I think some of that was going to be covered early on. So in, in some large part, that's why this is such a costly endeavor. There's a lot of steps to this process, to say the least.
If we, if we abandon it and we clean it ourselves, or they choose to do nothing, no roads, nothing, culverts or anything can go in it?
In the ditch along your particular property?
Or any, or any property along the ditch. It can be modified or not? I mean, what?
With the DNR permit, it absolutely can be modified. And there are provisions in the, the public waters law for crossings and those sorts of things, so long as they don't impair the, you know, course current or cross section of that public water. Those are usually permitted activities. You're going to have to show a need for it, and, and then there'll be a, there'll be a performance standard or a construction standard for it.
I'm not sure if it's four acres back to that's land locked yet or not. I'm not sure yet, because of, there's a lot new on this map down from us as far as housing. So, because at one time it was a concern.
If the ditch is abandoned, does the county own the, own the property under the ditch? No.
The answer is no. The, the, the actual, the, the interest in the ditch system is a property interest today of all of the landowners, which is why it requires that petition of the landowners to get this all, this process started. It requires petitions of landowners to do a lot of things on the public ditch, because the interest in the ditch is the landowners. This board is the custodian of that interest, is obligated by statute to protect that interest by implementing the procedures in the Drainage Code. So there is no public ownership of anything under that, over it. It's, there is the state's interest because it's public water, but that is, again, a regulatory interest almost exclusively.
I really don't have any more questions. I got, you kind of answered them all.
I'll pick them up, I'll have them on the way home.
So you've got, you've got our information. You got it.
Mr. Chair, if I, if I could, gentlemen, I've been to a lot of these types of hearings, and I really appreciate your comments, because I think you're thoughtful and respectful, and you have clearly articulated your concerns about the abandonment, so I appreciate that, and I'm sure the board knows as well.
We're all worried, I know that, I knew that coming here, but.
This is a difficulty.
My biggest concern right now, as I lead this meeting, is the loss of revenue on our property. It might only be twenty thousand, thirty thousand a year, but I'm still concerned about that. And the, the watershed or soil and water or the state or anything, I'm, I'm not sure if they can compensate that, that far, or, or, or are willing to compensate that far.
We did do check into some of the stuff you were talking about, putting property into different, different types of programs and stuff, and pretty much had to almost give it up at one point. So.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I would, gentlemen, I would take a visit to the Soil and Water Conservation District, talk to the folks at the Board of Water and Soil Resources. There are other programs, so I'm sure you've looked at CRP. CRP requires a cropping history of row crop. You don't have that.
No.
So you're ineligible. That takes you out of most of the federal programs. But there are some state programs that, that might be beneficial to you, and I would just encourage you to take a stop by the SWCD office. Again, I'm not writing a check that they can't cash. I'm just saying that they're going to be better aware of those programs than anyone sitting up here today.
Okay, yeah. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cole, when you talked about minimal maintenance on this, I just want to ask a question. Has the only maintenance then be, been where their properties are? Because it sounds like the rest has really sat there based on the board's decision or been maintenance, low maintenance. So if it has, and they have the ability to remove beaver dams or major obstructions, they'd still have access to that area they own to be able to do that through a permit, correct? correct? Which actually might go quicker in some ways.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Verillion, absolutely on their own property. They don't need any permission from neighbors. They can get those permits to do that. As to the scope of maintenance that's occurred here, you know, and I characterize it as infrequent and very specific, limited. I think staff probably has a better idea. I know when we sat down in advance of these hearings with staff, and I tried to have them articulate to me, what has the maintenance regime been? They basically said it's been very specific areas, and as to those specific areas, the staff might be able to comment more accurately than I can.
Jay Coligusson again. Country Knowles, Home Works, SLS. Yeah, I just want to clarify since on the map is up, so I can show you, our scope of this ditch is from the blue line all the way west to where it heads back south, all the way to Highway 19, or 86, I guess. So it's linearly 50% of the ditch. And again, our association, zero use out of it. Just so you understand, I have the lowest point in the depression, so my lot is in the middle of the brown. In April, after, yeah, as you can see right in here, in April, after a strong rain, yes, there will be water standing. And by July, I'm in there in tennis shoes, because I walk the dogs through there. I use the property. I've walked, you know, every inch of our association drainage ditch parcel. The majority of my neighbors have never set foot below that hill. It's about a 30-foot elevation from the south where the houses are, down into the drainage ditch. And again, it bowls into, the lowest part of the depression is where my property is. So just want to give you an idea of the scope and the scale. Again, we're 50% of this, and again, we don't see any value to it. We can walk out there in tennis shoes with dry feet in July, you know, through the rest of the year. It only occurs on a strong rain in April, and then it's gone. Do you guys have any questions for me on that?
I think so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys got to come to the microphone.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, the one thing I do want to call out is the maintenance that was done, it was on the Stepka property. So when the silt would fill in that, they'd call the county, and the county would come, and they would dig that out. And so to Stepka's request, that's the only part of this ditch that was maintained.
Okay. Thank you for that.
On the map, if I can point my finger right?
Yeah, and I don't know if we can get that map back up so we can, because we can't. We only see the screen. We can't see the...
Document camera. They can't see that.
There we go.
See it? Where this ditch ends, this point right here?
Okay.
And you'll notice that all of this property is natural waterway. This property owner right here, that elevation is a foot or two higher than the end of the ditch is. Now, you cannot make water run uphill. You could spend a million dollars on that ditch and still not make it run water for the fact that the private property owner on the end of the ditch, the outlet end of the ditch, won't let you do anything. Now, I've talked to people from the county for 40 years about this, and they said, you know, it's going to be wet when it rains, and it's going to be dry when it's not. And that's because the county has no authority to do anything past the outlet end of the ditch. And you can spend all the money digging you want, but digging a hole isn't going to make the water run uphill.
And I know you were up here once before, but just for the record, if you could remind us of your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Tim Gates. My address is 27253 Burgess Avenue. And if I had the picture back...
Oh. It's okay. Where are we looking?
This is, I got to get up so you can see. This is the south end of my property, these two lots here. And it's absolutely flat back there. Some work has been done many years ago, because I had dirt piled up here, but they only did that piece of property before I owned it, because that was the only piece of property they were allowed to go on by the landowners. And I have not seen any work on that in 40 years, but I've paid for the assessment for 40 years. And I also know that if you cannot take care of the natural drainage elevation, it does absolutely no good to do anything to the ditch. And as to the brothers haymaking down there, I understand that too, but the only time that you can't use that land is if it's unusually wet and flooded. And with time, it'll go over again. The high part will only hold water so high. Once the water is to that level, it will have to evaporate or seep into the river. You can't make water run uphill.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Any last comments on ditch eight? And as I'm going to look to my right, Mr. Cole, before you came in, because I had in my notes checked before with the attorney, before we closed public comment, but there was a motion and a second to close the public comment, and then we didn't open it, but we held off on that so more people could speak. So we have a motion and a second on the floor to close the public comment on ditch eight.
If there's no further public comment, that would be an appropriate motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to close public comment on ditch number eight. Any discussion? I don't think we got the discussion part. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are closed for public comment on ditch eight. We're going to move on to item number 4.4, looking to adopt resolution number 2025-121, adopting findings and an order granting a petition abandoning Scott County Drainage Ditch Number Eight. That is on the table. So move. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Mr. Chair, can we just clarify the movement in the second, please?
Uh, moved by Commissioner Ulrich, seconded by Commissioner Brennan.
Thank you.
And that motion passed. Okay, let's move on to 4.5, conduct a public hearing at 8:00 AM or thereabouts to receive information regarding the abandonment of Scott County Drainage Ditch Number 12 and receive public comment. Chris Loggi, welcome back. Thank you, ditch number 12.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Mr. Cole, did you want to address anything before we go forward with the public hearing for ditch 12?
Other than unless you want me to review any of the materials that the board had in the packet, or if it would be beneficial for the board to review that, no, I think we would go right into the presentation.
Okay. Thank you. On the screen, you'll see depiction of county ditch number 12. County ditch number 12, construction started in 1956 and was completed in July of that year. This ditch is located entirely within New Market Township. If you're looking at the map, the drainage for this ditch generally flows in a west-to-east orientation, and it ultimately drains into Rice Lake, which is on the Scott and Dakota County borders. In addition, this is considered the headwaters of the Verillion River. It's included in the DNR's public waters inventory as a public ditch. Basically, this ditch lies between a protected water course, a DNR-protected water course, and a protected water basin, which is Rice Lake. This ditch is fairly flat. The water in the drainage system, even if we were to repair the system, would not have anywhere to go due to Rice Lake being at the same elevation as the ditch. There were several petitions in the 70s and 80s that the county received to repair ditch 12. The repairs ultimately were not approved by the Drainage Authority due to the wetland impacts, so minimal repair work has ever been completed on this ditch. We did hold a landowner meeting on this ditch in September of 2023, trying to solicit feedback from the benefited owners to see what their, to describe their options to them, and try to solicit their opinion on how they wanted us to proceed with this ditch. The meeting was not well-attended, so in another effort to get that information, we sent out letters in October of 2024. We did not have a high response rate on this ditch. 47% of the owners never responded to our letter that was sent. However, ultimately, 52% of the owners of the benefited acres of this ditch did vote to abandon the ditch. Again, there's been minimal maintenance on this ditch. I didn't see a record in 2023. We did remove some beaver dams and clear a couple blockages. We've not had any liens placed on this ditch in decades, I would say, and the balance of the ditch fund is currently negative. With that, I would stand for questions.
All right. Thank you. Members, any questions for Ms. Loggi on ditch 12? No comments? Okay, so with that presentation on ditch 12, is there...
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to open the public hearing on ditch 12. Any discussion? Is all in favor?
Aye.
Public comment is now open for ditch 12. If you would like to make a comment, please make your way to the microphones, state your name, address, and whether or not you're a benefited owner for the record. That would be great. On ditch 12, we do have the one written submission. Thank you for that reminder I had set aside here. So we do have a written submission that will be part of the record. So that one is included.
That was two things.
And that was, yes. That was in favor of abandoning ditch 12, correct?
And then just for clarification on that, since that one is in favor of abandonment, that would increase the percentage of owners and acres that were voted for abandonment.
All right. That is, I was not sure, so thanks for clarifying that percentage. All right. Not seeing anyone rush to the microphone for, there we go. All right.
Bill Gallagher, 23631 Natchez Avenue. We are benefiting property. We're on the, be on the Westerly side of that. My questions coming in, and I guess they've hardly been answered, is if this is abandoned, it returns to DNR jurisdiction?
That's the word we've been getting so far, public waterways.
That is correct, Mr. Chair, and also because, and I think it's only the branch A and the lower portion of the main on the map that are the inventoried part of the public water. Those are the heavy dashed line portions. That other part of the main that goes up to the northwest, I do not believe is part of the inventoried public water. And then if you go to the very west end of branch A, there's a blue line that comes in. That is also public water. So it doesn't revert to DNR jurisdiction. DNR still has some authority over it, and in fact, you know, cases have said that if it's a heavy dashed line on the map, regardless of whether it's on the inventory list or on the map, the DNR can treat it as public waters. And so really what we're doing is we're stripping away the public drainage aspect of it, and it just goes back to that base condition, which is public water. The extension of the main up to the north and west, that probably is not, that just is going to become private, you know, basically a private ditch at that point, and the landowners can manage that in a way that's beneficial. They are limited by common law of reasonable use, that nobody's really going to be able to obstruct that system intentionally. But your base comment is, yes, the DNR is going to have a regulatory interest in anything that happens, especially in the public, in the inventoried portion of this system.
Right. Well, that's where we're in. My, I guess my concern would be as far as cleaning or whatever. I know on ours, it was cleaned back in the early 80s, west of that branch, we're assessed for it. But cleaning ourselves, that's fine, but it's a lot easier to deal with county ditch than it is the DNR. I would, I would ask, or I would request that why, why would we, I'm not asking you to clean the ditch, I'm not asking to pay the hundreds of thousands of dollars, but I am asking you to hold on to that authority and not give it up so that we could do it ourselves much easier, I think, if the need arises.
And there may be a comment on that?
Mr. Chair, I...
Tough to have one without the other?
Yeah. I will say that you still have to go through potentially DNR permitting for any work you would do on that. So there is a regulatory component of that, obviously, and there's a cost component to that. My experience has been that landowners that want to go into a public water course and remove obvious snags, obstructions, accumulated debris, that those permits are pretty readily issued. So I don't see that as a huge impediment, but again, I'm not in your shoes. You obviously view it differently. I think the biggest challenge for the board, if they retain this with no intention of actually doing the work to keep it in a state of repair, is that every day that they do that, they're exposing themselves to liability in that someone on this system could do something that they're completely unaware of, that then damages another party, and then that party's going to look at this Drainage Authority and say, you failed to keep the system in a state of perfect repair. You failed to remove that obstruction in time. You failed to inspect it, and so you have this ongoing expense regardless of whether you touch the ditch or not, and that risk exposure that it may not be the best place for the drainage system as a whole to be. If the drainage system gets sued for those damages and somebody wins, that doesn't get paid for out of some magic county coffer. That gets paid for by assessment to the benefited landowners. And so that's, you know, that's another reason as this board sits up here, making the difficult decision on behalf of everyone, given all of the facts in front of it. I mean, those are some of the things that are weighing on the mind of this board in considering whether to abandon or not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cole, you mentioned something earlier that I think we've talked about. I don't know if it was in the code where someone cannot, a private property owner on the ditch cannot arbitrarily go in and just build a dam or do something. They cannot do that in and of themselves. And is anyone else hungry for ice cream? Sounds like there's an ice cream truck someplace.
It's getting taken care of, Mr. Chair. So the, under the Drainage Code, obstructing a drainage, obstructing the drainage system is a crime against the drainage system. It can be prosecuted. There's also administrative processes by which that obstruction can be removed, and those costs charged back to the responsible party if you can find one. So that's when it's status as a public drainage system. When it's not a public drainage system, and it's now either natural water course or it is altered natural water course, it's been approved for drainage, which this would be, then judge-made law, common law of reasonable use applies, which also says that landowners have to use their lands reasonably. They can't unreasonably obstruct drainage to the damage of another party. There's another judge-made law that says where two or more parties have cooperated in the construction of a drainage improvement to benefit their mutual properties, which this actually occurred by coercion back in the 1950s when this was established, that thereafter, no party can obstruct it to the detriment of another. So while it wouldn't be the Drainage Authority enforcing that obstruction process under the Drainage Code, it would be a privilege of private landowners to enforce that using the common law that protects them to be able to continue to send their water downstream relatively unimpeded, so long as it's not, you know, causing unreasonable damage downstream, and so long as if you're obstructing, you're not causing unreasonable damage upstream.
Thank you for reiterating that. Okay, so I'm going to ask one last time. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on county ditch 12, or does anyone have any written materials they wish to present at this time?
Motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on ditch 12. Any discussion? I'm going to look to my right one last time to our attorney. Ditch attorney, is it...
You have received all the public comment. You've sought additional comment if any existed. I think a motion to close the public comment period is appropriate, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion with a second. There was no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So that brings us to item number 4.6, adopting resolution number 2025-122, adopting findings and an order granting a petition abandoning Scott County Drainage Ditch Number 12.
Make that motion.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Brennan and a second by Commissioner Ulrich on item 4.6. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I guess I'd just like to, you know, and I know we have one more coming up that I think a lot of the...
Mr. Chair, I guess I'd just like to, you know, and I know we have one more coming up that I think a lot of these folks are here for, but on these three ditches, really thank folks for talking and and especially those of you, Stepco's and Mr. Gallagher, who have some reasons to oppose the abandonment. I just want to say that I certainly hear you. But I'm voting in favor of the abandonment because I think this is our opportunity to get an extra level of government out of the equation, as Mr. Kolb says, explaining this, the DNR permits are still necessary, things are necessary. But in these ditches, we have this, you know, we kind of have this unnecessary level of government where we're required to do certain things that are costing all of you money. So I hear you, but in the in the end, it it seems like the best thing to do for everybody's pocketbook. So I just want to thank you for your comments and make sure that, you know, we're not ignoring you. We're we're hearing you, and there's a little angst to there.
Thank you for those comments. Any further discussion? Are we all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that passes. We move on to item 4.7, to conduct a public hearing at 8:00 AM or after to receive information regarding the abandonment of Scott County Drainage Ditch Number 5 and receive public comment. Chris Loggy, welcome. Ditch Number 5, presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Drainage Ditch Number 5 was constructed in 1916. It's located entirely within Cedar Lake Township. This is the ditch where there was a petition for repair that was filed in the early eighties. Ultimately, an engineer was appointed and determined there was a need for a repair. However, at the same time, there was a petition for abandonment because ninety, over ninety percent of the landowners at that time did not support the repair. So in 1989, the Drainage Authority denied the abandonment and also denied the order for repair. So only minimal maintenance has been done in that year and in future years. Jumping forward to 2013, there was a study called the Bradshaw Lake Study. It was performed by an engineering company, trying to determine the long-term plan for County Ditch 5. They invited multiple stakeholders into these talks to determine what their what their options were and what they were in favor of. Ultimately, stakeholders agreed that they wanted the minimal maintenance option, which avoided any wetland impacts, and that limited maintenance would was the maintenance that they wanted was limited to removing obstructions such as beaver dams and and tree snags. So to date, that is the maintenance that has been completed. The area of this ditch is very wet. There is limited agricultural activity on it. In November of 2024, we mailed out letters to the benefited owners on this ditch, again, to try to solicit opinion on what they wanted to happen for the future of this ditch. Over sixty-two percent of the benefited owners didn't respond to our letter. So that was four hundred and sixty-one point seven five benefited acres. But of that, three hundred and fifty-eight point five nine acres is owned by the DNR. We did try to engage the DNR to give us their opinion on what they wanted for the future of the ditch. They chose not to respond. Ultimately, abandonment of the ditch, excuse me, was voted on by fifty-nine percent of the benefited owners along this ditch. The the maintenance records that we were able to find for County Ditch 5 does indicate that what we've been doing is multiple beaver dam removals, averaging about one per year, and then tree snags. They were pretty active in like 2016 to 2019. Then there was a break until 2023, and they and then we had additional snags that were removed. A portion of this, the problem with this ditch is that there are two culverts that were installed that are above the legal ditch bottom, the Highway 13 and the 233rd Street. So the culvert along Highway 13 used to be a bridge over this drainage area, and we're uncertain why men got put in a culvert versus letting it remain a bridge. But it has been that way for for decades. So with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you very much. Members, any questions before we go to the commentary?
Mr. Chair, members of the board. I do want to call out that at the north end of this ditch, up at up at when it crosses over 13, that area is farmed by that owner, and there is a lot of benefit there. And there's also been brought to our attention that there was a private easement agreement to the south of that area. And we don't know the implications of that easement. Maybe Mr. Kolb can talk to that, but this private easement gave somebody rights to drain into the ditch, but they're not part of the ditch system. So take that under consideration when you're going through your public hearing. But I just wanted to call out this part to the north and to the east of 13 is highly A.
Okay, yep. Thank you for that. Caveat. Any questions for them before we move to public comment?
Motion to open the public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
And a second to open the public hearing for ditch number 5. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Public comment is open once again. Please make your way to the microphone. State your name, address, whether or not you're a benefited owner for the record. This is why we're here. Let's take advantage of this opportunity. Please. Yeah, get in line. Be great.
Hello, my name is Drew Stillwell, 23980 Newport Avenue. I'm new to the ditch, only ten years. I think people have grown up on this ditch. I've heard a lot of stories about dirt biking in the pastures. And after hearing the comments of everybody else this morning, I can agree with, I agree, I agree with everybody. Everybody's points are very valid. The ditch where I live is a spur, spur four.
We can't see it on the here we go.
Spur four here?
Oh, sure, sure.
I'm neutral on this, but I'm really frustrated because I feel like this is the county's negligence. You know, you guys have had money in your accounts to clean this out and have done nothing. And you've caused a lot of angst between neighbors that are unnecessary. One of my neighbors wants to drain into the ditch that's not on the ditch. I said, well, they don't clean downstream. So if they're not going to clean up downstream, I don't want to be your toilet bowl. You know, we have horses and things, so I'm just frustrated that you guys would put the, allow the culvert to be put in too high. You know, in my job, if I did something like that, I would be held responsible. But the county just plays, rolls over and plays dumb, and it's quite frustrating.
And are you, what what culvert are you specifically speaking of, just so we're clear?
I believe what the one I said earlier, 13 and then 230.
That's the state culvert, right?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify where exactly, yeah.
I went to put a barn up this year, and the city told me that the DNR changed the high level watermark. It's been a drought last two years. How 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 are we changing the watermark, high watermark? So I just, I'm trying to be neighborly, but if you guys aren't going to do your job as far as maintaining the ditch or cleaning the ditch downstream, you put me in a bad spot with my neighbors. So I just assume the water drained, the water's green, which means it's stagnant. And so I just like this resolve so I don't have to be to live with live with that angst with my neighbors. I want this to be a peaceful resolution that benefits everybody.
Thank you. Yeah, in with the culvert on Highway 13, just the reality of it is, we don't have the jurisdiction on a state highway. I, otherwise, I'd maybe bring my own excavator out there and do it. We we don't have the authority to do that. So it's not a county rolling over and playing dumb on on a particular culvert. If there was a culvert that we put in and we have jurisdiction over, that's something we can remedy. So I understand your frustration. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Kevin Weatherall. I'm an attorney. I'm here today with Tim Olafland and Ronnie Malika. I think it's appropriate for us to come up now after Mr. Stillwell spoke because these folks are the neighbors that Mr. Stillwell talked about that are, they're not legally benefited owners currently. I suspect they would be if there was a redetermination of benefits. The location of what we're talking about here is, if you look at the map here, this parcel where spur number four goes is Mr. Stillwell's property. 240th Street East runs east and west across along this line. To the south of that is the Olafland property, and then Malika, and Malika's have some additional property up to the north of 240th Street. All of that property is agricultural property. All of that property today drains through an easement that was granted in 1944 over all of these properties to the south of 240th Street through a culvert under 240th Street and onto Mr. Stillwell's land. That easement, there's water there today, water flows that way, but I agree with Mr. Stillwell, because of a lack of maintenance by the county, it's not flowing into the ditch. It's pooling in his property, and it's going to pool in his property regardless. And what our clients would like to see is, would like to see the water flow as it's intended. There have been discussions amongst neighbors with the township. The township has no interest in cleaning out the culvert under their road. If you go out there today, there's pooling on both sides of that culvert. So we have concerns that not only will it affect Mr. Stillwell's property and other properties towards the ditch, because the the topography is here that all the water, this is the highland on the north side of 240th Street East. It's all going to flow this way, and it's going to flow to where the spur is today, regardless of what anyone does. If it doesn't flow or there's a heavy rain, it's going to flood 240th Street East. Right now, in October of this year, that water level was about maybe only eighteen inches below 240th Street East in late October, and it was dry. But there's standing green water, as Mr. Stillwell says, on both sides of that road. Here's photos from Mr. Malika showing the water on both sides of 240th Street. Pooling there today. So this would be the south side.
If you're happy to speak and you had to come up to the microphone so everyone, our ones and ones of viewers can name and address for the record, please.
I'm buying in Malika at 1096 East 240th Street. And we've got an easement that we can go through Stillwell's property to get hooked into that spur. And he won't let us do it. We've got, we're not what you call a benefited property owner. We do not have land that's right on the ditch, which that we benefit by tile that drain into that to the DNR property and into the ditch, but we never get notified about it.
And we're sandwiched in between from all the other properties up farther upstream that drain into what we take away the water to get, so we can farm the property.
I mean, we should be assessed like anybody else. We should be notified like anybody else, but we are not. I've been there my whole life. Seventy-seven years. Nothing has never been done. We had a piece of, uh, here, if I could show you on that map. Over 64 or here. They went over here, if you can see, we've got property that's up here. And we had trouble getting, we've got, it goes at an angle through DNR property to do drainage. And we wanted to clean out some of that debris so our tile would be able to run better. Well, we contacted the DNR. They came back and said, no, you can't do it. I showed you, we've got an easement, that we've got the rights to go in there to do it. And so then after I gave her the copy of the easement, then she said, go ahead and do it. So we were able to ditch some private, our own private ditch in the DNR property so it could drain in. But we, according to the state, we are not a benefited, and we are because we've got tile that run into the property. I mean, not directly right on that we own it, but.
And I think that brings up another point that we wanted to make today.
We have, we have a total of five hundred and seventy-five acres that benefits because of the ditch. And we pay over $28,000 real estate taxes, and the county doesn't want to do anything about it.
So the property tax is different than the benefited owner's role looking down. So so part of the big chunk of that property, just look, and maybe Chris, I don't know, is part of this. So the big biggest chunk, five hundred and some acres, is not currently in the benefited? Yeah, so none of that?
Because supposedly, we do not have the land right onto the
So when this was last done, when was this redetermination of benefits last done? Do we have a record of that? So whenever that was done, it was a long time ago. It was a long time ago. So at that point in time, their tracts of land were not part of the watershed for this particular ditch, correct?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, back back in the eighties, that was part of the repair petition is that do we look at bringing in the Malika, Malikas and and bring them into the system? But again, it was at that time that there was, there was a a big percentage of the people who voted to abandon it.
Well, and and so that's part of my second. I I know I like to ask all these multifaceted questions. So that's the other piece of it is to reiterate what Chris had talked about, there was some petition early on, but then that was voted also down by the landowners not to do any repairs. Am I, did I characterize that correctly?
Both petitions were voted down.
Okay. By by whom? By whom?
By the Drainage Authority at the time.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Kolb? Mr. Kolb, could you respond? I think this gets at one of your liability questions, right? When there's a split, it's not the county that makes these decisions. Ultimately, they decide as a drainage board, but it's the petition of the landowners who want things done correctly. And in this case, there was just as many that wanted nothing as wanted something, if I'm following it correctly.
Mr. Chair and Ms. Vermillion, it, the Drainage Code is not set up to be, you know, democratic election, so it's not majority rule. Ultimately, the Drainage Authority has to make a decision based on the facts placed before it. There's many drainage authorities, and it's not unwise to do so. You know, we'll get the temperature of the community that's responsible financially for any activity it takes. And in the instance of of County Ditch 5, there were these, again, these competing interests. I believe if I heard Chris's, Ms. Loggy's presentation correctly, that one of the reasons why the repair efforts were abandoned back in the eighties, or or maybe later than that as well, is because there were regulatory concerns with wetlands and otherwise. And a lot of that has to do with, I mean, we can, we can point back to Trunk Highway 13 and the bridge that used to be there, which is now a culvert crossing, which we believe is at a higher elevation. That's been there for over 50 years. And so there's a whole series of expectations that have arisen up around that, including the inventory of a large public waters wetland, which basically traverses all of spur four down under the Stillwell property and then all the way up to the main. I have it here on my, on the GIS map, showing that, where that is. And so it it's not just that there was no landowner majority that seemed to want one thing or the other, but it was also all of these other considerations that the board has to put into whatever action it takes because just because it's a public drainage system does not exempt you from all of those other things. The statute is very clear that you must consider all of those material matters of law, including all the environmental considerations and the ecology, including the, you know, the community economics, all of that. So I I can't say specifically what motivated the board's decision earlier. I don't know any board other than this board today. So I I would imagine, though, that that there were multiple factors that influenced the board's decision to basically say this is going to either be too expensive, there's no utility to it, or there's some other issue at that time. But going back to, I think, your original question, Ms. Vermillion, this is, this is not about, you know, all about what landowners want because we're going to have divergent opinions there. This really is about how the board views the utility of this system and the practicality of restoring it. And we know that there are challenges here. There may be portions of the system, as has been discussed, I think internally by staff, that could be retained. But you get further upstream in the system, and you get into the Bradshaw Lakes WMA, you get into substantial public waters wetlands complexes. get into substantial public waters wetlands complexes, you get into other issues and it makes, it becomes more and more difficult to envision a repair or any other work that could occur on this system without what I would consider outrageous expenses. So again, not knowing what motivated a board back early in earlier times as to their decision making, but I would imagine it was all of those factors, including the social landscape and the public's interests.
Can I ask Mr. Cole, if I may?
Yes, please, please.
A substantial portion of the acreage that this ditch benefits is owned by the state, is owned by the DNR. So if there is repair done, does the state have to pay their proportional share of the assessed costs?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Weatherall, yes and no. When viewers go out, everybody's laughing, that's the lawyer answer, right? When this, when, if we were to redetermine benefits on this system, the state would have special consideration because what the statute requires is that when the viewers look at state land that's held for conservation purposes, which is this land, they have to look at the intent or the purpose for which it's being held. If it's being held basically in a pre-settlement condition in a state of nature and the DNR isn't actively controlling water elevations, retaining and discharging waters for lake management purposes or for wildlife purposes or whatever it is, basically that's not benefited to the state at that point. So I don't know how viewers would view the state land in this case, but I would imagine that it would be minimal benefit in terms of the proportion of benefit related to the rest of it. Now, this is another one of those systems that established in the nineteen teens, has likely not been redetermined since then, so we have a multitude of statutory changes that influence how we would view benefits. I know as to your clients, the Olaflands and Malakas, they don't, they're not in the benefited area, at least for a portion of their land, specifically the portion that you were addressing with the easement, that would likely come in.
Agreed.
But again, it doesn't necessarily, just because you're in and a benefited owner on the system, just because it's a public system, doesn't mean that this board can do everything that the landowners might want, they're still restricted, they might not be able to repair it in a way that is of any use to anyone because they're gonna have to do that either by mitigating wetland areas or avoiding their impacts, which means, that means we're reducing a scope of repair. So there's a lot of challenges on this system, DNR being one of them, and they're not a very good payer, candidly.
And I probably should have let off, one of the things we're, what we're asking you to do on this ditch today is to simply table the decision. The Malakas and Olaflands, because they were not provided notice as currently benefited owners, only very, very recently found out about this within the last?
From another neighbor.
Yeah, week to two weeks. So they didn't have an opportunity to go to the public meeting back in the fall of last year. We'd like the opportunity to talk to neighbors because the reality is, your decision here isn't gonna stop the flow of water. What it's going to do is potentially increase conflict between neighbors and increase cost to those neighbors because they're gonna end up having to sue each other when water backs up or water doesn't flow. That's the problem that we're facing today if you act on the motion here today. If you table it and give the parties an opportunity to sit down and have conversations, maybe they can get the DNR to the table, I somewhat doubt that. But at least amongst the neighbors who are affected on Spur Four, to talk about how can they work together to get water to flow so it doesn't affect Mr. Stillwell's property, it goes where it needs to go, it comes from the other side of two hundred and fortieth Street and doesn't block up the township's culvert. That's really what we're asking you to do today is simply give us a little time to try and continue to have conversations so that everybody knows what they can expect going forward. The Malakas and Olaflands know, to Mr. Cole's point, that if there's a redetermination of benefits, they're very likely going to be assessed for ditch number five if it's not abandoned, they understand that, they don't have a problem with that. The problem we do have is right now, there is a, it's the fear of cost and how much it's gonna cost the individual landowner and nobody here can say with any degree of certainty or even estimate so far, how much is that gonna cost Mr. Olafland to maintain the ditch? How much would it cost Mr. Stillwell? What would his proportional share be? What you've given is very large frightening numbers that are, but we don't know how many people that'll be spread across in any estimates of that. That certainly, I think, would be helpful to everybody here. I know there are folks here where if it was five thousand dollars was their share to repair the ditch, they wouldn't have a problem with it. If it was a hundred thousand dollars for their share of the ditch, they might. But right now, we don't have that data and nobody can really make an informed decision. What you did do, and I understand the process, is you sent out a letter saying to people who own ten acre parcels, it's gonna cost millions of dollars and you're gonna have to pay for it. What did you think they would do? Do you think they really care where the water goes or do you think they worry about, are they gonna have to pay their portion of millions of dollars and what is their portion? We'd like more time to have some discussions about what those proportions might be and have discussions among neighbors to see if we can solve the problem of water flow into what is now this wetland in the area. Spur number four, you can see it, I mean, it's standing water on the map, Spur number four goes into the main here and that effectively leads up to the DNR land. That's where the water's gonna go, but the question is how far back to the south is it gonna go towards these other property owners? So that's what we're asking you to do today and if there are any questions rather than me or Mr. Olafland or a few of the comments, we're here for you.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Again, I, if only if this is helpful to the board. Again, at the staff level, we've looked at ditch five, we've looked at are there certain dividing points where it may make more sense to, you know, partially abandon rather than abandon the whole thing. As to the specific request made by Mr. Weatherall, it is not a bad idea. Clearly, there are some issues there, they have a private issue absolutely because there's an easement that is, you know, that subjects the, the parties that have spoken thus far today to certain obligations that really has nothing to do with our ditch, that's their private ditch agreement. But Spur Four serves as their outlet and if Spur Four is compromised, obviously their concern is that it compromises the utility of their easement as well. So I don't think it's a bad idea if the board wanted to pause this. It would also be helpful if the board did continue this and we did not have a date or time to continue it to, again, I don't know, Mr. Weatherall, maybe there is a period of time that you think is reasonable that we could continue this, I'll hold off on an answer to that. But that would also allow staff, if you gave us some guidance, to look at what other alternatives could be rather than a complete abandonment to just partially abandon. And I'm thinking maybe you could abandon everything east of Newport Avenue, for example, so that lower portion that gets into the Bradshaw Lakes WMA, which really, it serves you no utility potentially as a public drainage system at that point. And then maybe the stuff on the, on the western end, because it does actively drain agricultural properties, maybe that has to be retained. That leaves the county road or the State Highway thirteen issue off the table for now anyway, but eventually you're gonna have to engage on that as well.
Did you want to answer us the time or do you want to talk about that later, John?
I, Mr. Chair, I, I would, I would like to know how much time they think they need only because if we can avoid having to re-notice this and announce a date, time, location on the record, that would be very helpful.
I would say sixty days would be plenty.
Okay.
Right, right, we'll ask, we'll, I'll ask.
But sixty days, I think, would be enough time for us to do what we need to do.
So on this particular item, we have sixty days.
Well, that's, that's a suggestion, you haven't taken any action yet, I think, take more comment.
We still have more comment coming, I just wanted to note that for this particular conversation, sixty days and we still have some folks that wanna.
Hi, I'm Tim O'Loughlin. My concern is, of course, the water flow and we all know that the culverts are too high under the roads. Why not start with Plan A is lower the culverts to make the water flow? Now, how do you go after the state to get them to lower thirteenth and the other one on two hundred and thirtieth, I think it is? Without that, I mean, that, that's the problem with this whole ditch. And if the state did it wrong, the state should fix the problem. Now, how you pursue that is a whole nother process, I understand that, but it's forty years of fighting that stops at the culvert's too high. So how do you pursue that?
Where was the other one, now to?
I believe that's two thirty-third, correct?
Newport, Newport.
Two, two thirty-third. And I believe two thirty-third, is that a township or a county road?
The one that goes north and south, that's Newport, I think. That's what Drew's, Drew's address is Newport.
Well, two thirty-third is the ground below the township.
But that's Township Road, so why is that?
Okay, if we're gonna have comment, we need to come up to the microphone, aim, rank serial number.
It's the old sixty-four.
It used to be County Road sixty-four, but we had trouble that one year that it flowed over the road there on Newport, it is now, I think, that goes north and south and somebody died going through the water. And then after that, all this worthless county would have to put a expensive bridge to cover that area and they didn't want to do it. So they turned it over to the township, so now it's known as the Township Road, not County Road sixty-four. And that's where the culverts are too high too because the water is sitting there all the time.
All right, any more comment from your camp?
That's good.
All right, thank you very much.
And I'm Ron Malaka. They're kinda confused about the culverts, the culverts are on two thirty-third and are the ones that are also high, from my understanding. So the ones on Newport are also too high and what they did to fix that issue was they just put more dirt in on top of these culverts to keep the road from flowing over, keep the water from flowing over, which to me was a total band-aid.
Yeah, we have this noted, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome, good morning Commissioners, my name is Scott Corin, I'm, I have eighty acres just to the north of Malakas and so I'm a benefited landowner and I just have a couple comments on it. I called the, forgive me where, which number I called, but I called five times left messages. When you sent the notification out, it would have been very helpful to have this map 'cause you, the, the initial like, Kevin had mentioned is, you know, could be a million dollars. Well, if there's only three of us on the ditch, that's a lot of money for me, if there's a hundred of us on the ditch, it's no big deal. So I've been trying to get a map and, and I also would have liked the history of the ditch, I've only owned the property about seven, eight years and when I look at your resolution to abandon the ditch, that's when I got the history of the ditch. So why didn't we get that earlier? So I guess I'm, would like to table it for sixty days and now, 'cause literally I got most of my information in the last twenty-four to forty-eight hours and a lot of it was from neighbors. So the ditch doesn't flow very well, my, you know, eighty acres dumps into it and it's pretty much stagnant water and, which leads to the point that the culvert's too high on thirteenth. So would love to see abandoned it and, not abandoned, but postpone it, gives us a little more time to do some research and to see who's actually affected by it. But, you know, we're in the northwest quadrant of this that it's all agriculture and we definitely need this ditch, so thank you for.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
I'm James Falyer and I own the land right on Highway thirteen where the culvert is under, goes under there. You know, you say that culvert is too high, it's thirteen and a half feet too high, that is a lot of the problem. So why don't you figure out how you can get the state to do something?
I've got a long list for the state to do something.
Yeah, I know, I know, but that is a lot of the problem.
Thirteen and a half feet?
At least, yeah. You know, you say it's too high, well, what is too high, a foot, two feet, no, it's, if you down to grade, it's actually more than thirteen and a half feet.
That's not a clerical error, thirteen and a half feet, that's unintentional.
Yeah, actually I think it's more than that. But that's a lot of the problem.
Thank you. And before I ask for a last call on the public comment, I have a procedural question for members and our, Mr. Cole, if, because we're still in public comment, this is still a public comment period, if, if postponing this particular item, if the board wants to do that, what are, what's the process to do that?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, it would be a motion to continue and postpone is the right rule under, right word, under Robert's rules, but for the hearing, we would continue it, we would prefer to continue it to a date, time and location announced on the record in order to avoid any re-noticing requirements. And then any additional purpose for the continuance that could be stated in the record, I think in this case, it would be to allow the whole community to consider, you know, alternatives or, or other concerns or to address other concerns they have as part of the process and then also to allow staff to investigate actions alternative to full abandonment would be appropriate reasons. And that would just be by motion and second and then when that's done, you would be continued and you would have nothing more to do on the.
So the public comment period remains open?
You can do one of two things, you can leave the public comment period open and then reopen it during the continuance process or you could close it today. Again, I think we've heard from folks that have an interest in the ditch, that actually have standing to speak today, but it really is in the discretion of the board as to whether it wants to hold the public comment period open and carry it through to the continued hearing. Otherwise, at the continued hearing, you're just gonna get some staff reports and the rest of it and maybe you could indulge Mr. Weatherall and his clients as to what they discovered or determined during the continuance.
Right, so also procedurally for us as a, as a board to discuss it, we're free to discuss that option now, which would lead to the potential motion?
You, you can certainly have discussion.
Got it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna stop you.
You know, a room full of attorneys, I wanna make, make sure my Bobby's Rules of Order or, or not Robert, but, welcome back. Name it, name an address.
Drew Stillwell, two, three, nine, eight, zero, Newport Avenue. I'm all for the continuance of this if that's what my neighbors still choose, I just, I want you guys to make it transparent and drop the legal lead so the rest of us who are not attorneys can, I'll have to get an attorney now, which is fine. But the access to the information, make it clearly accessible so that everybody here can make a informed decision with counsel, that's all I ask, so that, I didn't even get a meeting, I noticed this meeting today. Well, one of my neighbors told me about it and so I've also never seen an easement onto my property, I've never seen or agreed to that. So we just need, we need to have a chance to, if that's the way that you guys choose to go, that give me the information of where my attorney can get your, get to get all the background history.
And I may want to, so you receive no notice to your benefited owner? And you received no notice?
Whether or not one of my children threw it away, but I have not seen it.
Yeah, so I don't know, do we want to, I mean, they, how, how did we notice? Let's maybe just revisit that to make sure that.
And I don't go on Facebook, so if you put it on Facebook.
No, no, it would have been, no, no, this would have been a, no, this was not a, because this is a targeted list of benefited owners, so maybe just give us the.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, we mailed notices to all of the benefited owners, so, you know, I don't know if Cliff Clavon delivered the mail that day, but we did notice that all the owners by mail specifically to their address, so.
It might still be coming.
Mail, yeah, no, no, that's, and how many days in advance typically would that have been sent out, what's the standard?
We mailed them the day that we set the public hearing, so three weeks ago.
Okay. I know I got piles of mail that I don't always, or junk mail and, yes.
Oh, you're, there you go.
Chris, how much time, if there was a pause, how much time it would be needed?
The next meeting, which would be sixty days from now, would be June seventeenth. That is the meeting that we just set the, the public hearing for County Ditch Four as well, so.
Oh, right, 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 yes, yes.
My question though, Chris, I think what the Commissioners, is that enough time for you to chat with the DNR and understand and go through all of the things that we need to also have prepared so that they have the right information?
Thanks, thank you, Ms. Vermillion, yes, we would make every attempt to do that, the question would be whether or not we receive a response. Again, we did try to reach out to the DNR on this ditch and they chose not to respond, so.
And mind out on this particular one as well.
Well, it seems we need to talk to our area manager, who I think will be here in five minutes if we get going, to look into the history of that project and why decisions were made, so we'll have to find that out.
All right, we have one individual standing at the podium.
Bonnie Malaka again. Here Drew is a copy of the easement, I've got it. I went to the county, I used to work in the registered deeds office and I don't know how long ago I went there to see if there was any easements. We actually have three different easements for our property drain and I've got one.
recorded easements that you folks can have access to, of course, public records. Going to, Mr. Stillwell, your point, I mean, Chris Logge, you're the lead on this, I believe, so contact information, and Kevin's on it as well, so the information is there and available, and we'll make it as there and available as possible. Okay, Members, we have talked about a few things. What is your pleasure on the continuance? Was that the postponement slash continuance? And keeping it open, keeping the public comment open? I think I saw a shaking head.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I, I would go ahead and make, make a motion to table this matter and continue this public hearing to June seventeenth at eight a.m., for the purpose of the request by, by some of the benefited and potentially benefit neighbors, also for us to be able to look into the culvert issue. And finally, I think it would be wonderful to have a little bit more guidance and recommendations regarding some partial abandonment possibilities, options, and recommendations. And I would be open to a friendly amendment for other items if anyone wants to add on.
All right, that's a.
Second.
That was a full amendment, I'm looking at Michelle, we can't, we have it on the records, we have all of that. And there was a second to that motion of continuance. Commissioner Brennan, did you have something? You ready to?
Sorry, I was, I was wanting to add the, having a look at the abandonment of partial abandonment of property.
Yep, so that would be included in that motion.
Well, I think besides MinDOT and the culvert, I think the environmental requirements of Bradshaw Lake and whatever they went through earlier needs to be in there as well, and understanding that.
Certainly, I would add that. I think that has to do with some of the partial abandonment issues, so definitely. Thank you.
We know the spirit of that motion. We have a motion, it was seconded. Any discussion on that, on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, so that has been continued to June seventeenth at eight a.m.
Mr. Chair, motion to adjourn.
Um, yes, we're gonna skip item number four-point-eight, go to five, since that's gonna be continued.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, meeting adjourned. Good morning. We are going to convene the April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five Scott County Board of Commissioners. We had an earlier meeting, and we did the pledge then, so we will forego that now. Item number two, amendments to the agenda.
I would like to make an amendment to move item number six, the consent agenda, above number, number five, so making number six, number five.
Okay, let's, we have a motion and a second to move six to five and five to six. Motion and a second, did I hear a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the agenda will be stand as amended. Item number three, approved minutes of the April first, twenty-twenty-five board meeting that were distributed, are there any changes, any additions?
Approval.
Second, motion second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, all right, minutes are approved. Item number four, recognition of interested citizen, that's always a great time, we had ditch boarded with a full lectern. Is there anyone that would like to avail themselves to the podium to address the board for any reason? I'm not seeing anyone, so we will see you next time. And we'll move to item number five, which is, the new five, which is now the consent agenda. Item five-point-one, I think that's procedurally correct, we're moving that to five-point-one. Adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash two-eight, authorizing a contract increase for Ames Construction, Inc. on the Miriam Junction Trail Project. Five-point-two, adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash five-five, authorizing final payment to Valley Paving, Inc. for the twenty-twenty-three pavement preservation program, package A. Five-point-three, adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash five-six, authorizing final payment to Valley Paving, Inc. for the twenty-twenty-three pavement preservation program, package B. Five-point-four, adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash five-seven, authorizing entering into an agreement with Fore Control, Inc. for roadside noxious weed and brush spraying. Five-point-five, adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash six-six, authorizing entering into agreement with Northwest Asphalt, Inc. for the County Highway seventy-eight and seventy-nine roundabout project. Five-point-six, adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash eight-five, authorizing entering into an agreement with Sir Lyons Alot, LLC, for the twenty-twenty-five annual pavement marking and striping project. Five-point-seven, adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash eight-nine, authorizing entering an agreement with Gopher State Seal Coat, Inc. for the twenty-twenty-five trail preventative maintenance project. Five-point-eight, adopt resolution number two-zero-two-five dash nine-zero, authorizing entering into a twenty-twenty-five watershed-based implementation funding grant agreement with the Minnesota Board of Water and Soil Resources. Five-point-nine, adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash nine-eight, authorizing entering into cooperative agreements with Jackson and Louisville Townships for participation in the twenty-twenty-five seal coat program. Five-point-ten, adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash nine-nine, authorizing a budget amendment and entering into an agreement with Pearson Brothers, Inc. for the twenty-twenty-five highway seal coat project. Five-point-eleven, adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash one-zero-seven, authorizing a budget amendment to the twenty-twenty-five highway operations budget. Five-point-twelve, adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash one-zero-eight, authorizing payment to Carver County for County Highway one-oh-one bridge flood seal. You're welcome. Five-point-one-three, adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash one-zero-nine, adopting a twenty-forty comprehensive plan amendment to re-guide ten properties in the Lydia area and Spring Lake Township, Spring Lake Town Board applicant. Five-point-one-four, adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash one-one-zero, authorizing sponsorship of the Vermillion River Watershed Joint Powers Organization for Minnesota County's intergovernmental trust membership. Five-point-one-five, adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash one-one-four, authorizing entering into a grant agreement with the Metropolitan Council for a Cleary Lake Trail pavement maintenance project. Five-point-one-six, approve the application for three-two percent malt liquor license for St. Patrick Athletic Association in Cedar Lake Township for twenty-twenty-five. Five-point-one-seven, approve a renewal application for Scott County on-sale liquor license for Castle Kitchens Corporation, DBA Minnesota Renaissance Festival in Louisville Township for twenty-twenty-five. Five-point-one-eight, adopt, or, I'm sorry, approve the one-day to four-day temporary on-sale liquor license for the Hometown Bats Foundation in Belle Plaine Township. Five-point-one-nine, approve record of dispersments and approve claims. Five-point-twenty, approve payroll processing of personnel actions. Twenty items on the consent. Members, what is your leisure?
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Second, motion and a second, any discussion?
I, I just want to comment that I appreciate the, I had questions yesterday, and I appreciate the quick response that I got back from Tony and Vanessa on the questions that I had, so. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We have a motion and a second for those twenty items, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, those are approved, and now we will move to the new six, which is now six-point-one, to receive information on Scott County delivers topic highway mobility and economic impacts. Katie, welcome, take it away.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Today, we have a great panel here to discuss highway mobility and its significant economic impacts within Scott County. Community design is a core objective of the board's strategic plan, with strategies focused on enhancing safety, mobility, and economic development through a balanced transportation system. Our principal arterial highway systems are critical to achieving these goals. As a growing county, our continued investment and strategic buildup of this system in a balanced manner is essential. The data supports preserving the regional mobility offered by principal arterial highways as greater mobility fuels economic development. Additionally, strategic infrastructure investments on principal arterials have led to significant safety benefits. A high-performing highway system is a unique opportunity to touch the lives of all residents and the regional community in a meaningful way. A sincere thank you to all the staff that worked so hard on the narrative and compiling that data, and a thank you to our external partners for their time here today. With that, I will ask our facilitators to introduce themselves and then our panels. Please share your name and what department you work for.
I'm Scott Head, I'm the accounting manager.
Michael Thompson, Property and Taxation Services.
Lisa Brodsky, Public Health Director.
Steve Collins, Scott County Sheriff's Office.
Lisa Freeze, Transportation Services.
Bryant Fiesack, I'm the South Area Manager for MinDOT Metro.
Welcome, welcome.
Very happy to be here.
Welcome.
Greg Overly with CHS, Inc.
Greg Jensen, Transportation Planning Manager.
John Riddell, Transportation Services.
Tony Winneke, County Engineer. Now, of course, everyone's welcome, we just happen to have a meeting that, maybe your ears were burning perhaps, Mr. MinDOT, so welcome.
They're always burning.
True, true.
All right, and with that, thank you all. Michael, if you'd start with our first question.
Thank you. One of the measures that I found somewhat interesting, it has to do with having at least fifty percent of the local labor force living and working in the county, which is on page ten, and I have maybe a multi-part question, but first off, I look at the numbers from twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty-one, there's a substantial increase in that measurement for the percentage of people who live and work within the county, and I can assume maybe that that had to do with how respondents answered the question if they worked at a remote, and maybe that, that becoming more prevalent? Is that the case? That'd be the kind of first question.
Yep, that is, that's correct. And that's what we suspect, is that it's, it's how they, they answered the question, but with COVID, and more and more people have the ability to work from home, since like, technology was kind of forced to upgrade, even here with, with Scott County, where we had that more ability to work from home, I think people had answered it that way. You can see every county was experiencing that kind of uptick during that. And so we don't have the twenty-four data, the twenty-four data won't be available till September, so it'll be interesting to see, because there was a decline from twenty-one to twenty-three, so how does that, does that decline continue as more and more people return to work?
Thank you. And then, do we know if somebody works remote, like, four days a week? Were they counted like as eighty percent working in the county they live, or is that?
We don't, we didn't conduct the survey, so we don't know those details, how they answered it.
And then the final kind of question I had on this, there's a number of scenarios that could result in us having a more favorable measurement, greater number of people living and working within the county. One obvious scenario is if somebody lives here already and works downtown Minneapolis, and they switch jobs to within the county, I don't think any of us would question that would be a huge benefit, less travel and all that kind of thing. But what about the person who lives in Bloomington, works maybe at a warehouse in Shakopee, and they moved to Jordan? That person wasn't in our data the year, the study before, but now is a positive, saying they live and work in the county, so it's going towards that increased percentage that we want to see according to the measure. However, now they're potentially commuting further on the roadways and, and then living their day-to-day lives, previously in Bloomington, if they're going to school or the grocery store and all those kind of things, they're now doing here. So is there, is there any way to track how those changes happened from here and why they occurred?
I don't know that we have the detail in the, in the survey to answer that, but I think the benefit, you know, or the things we can see is the impact on roadways and our principal arterials with the river crossing one-sixty-nine, and, you know, trying to get more, more people to work in the county, not having to make that commute across the river, where, you know, that is a substantial investment to try and improve that situation, the congestion that's at the river. I think overall, we would see by more and more people working in the county, that we wouldn't have that, you know, that peak demand going to other counties, especially trying to cross the river.
Thank you.
Go next. In looking at your crash data, and I have to say, most of the crash data in here is amazing. It really clearly indicates the pre and post-construction projects, so, and the decrease in crashes, I think that's clearly stated and really speaks to a lot of the great work you're doing. I did have a question about the crash data on page fifteen, however, it looks like from the chart, even though we have decreased even the number of cars on the road, we're still not quite at pre-COVID levels, it is increasing, number of fatal and serious injuries, crashes are increasing in Scott County and appear to be going down in other places. And I wonder if you can speak to why you think that might be, and how does this particular data, how it may inform your work moving forward?
Yeah, thank you, great question. So if you look at both page fourteen and fifteen, so fourteen is the crash rate, so that's all crashes, and obviously that is trending down, and it, it looks good. And then on fifteen, it's actually the, the fatal and serious injury crashes, so your highest level crashes, and we've had an uptick in, in a few years. And so this is probably more what we're going to be looking at moving forward, in part because of the reporting requirements or lack thereof for property damage crashes, which are captured on, on page fourteen in that graph. So really focusing on fifteen, and we've made a ton of investment and improvements in a lot of areas in which we have improved kind of hotspot areas. We've got a lot of rural roundabouts, things of that nature, and which we did have, you know, several crashes, so we've been very successful in that regard. The, the fatal crashes are pretty random. When we look at our crashes over the last, say, five years, there's not like any one hotspot that we've had a lot of either fatal or serious injury crashes that you can come to. We've got a specific concern here. So most of those crashes involve, they're in two areas in, in particular, they would be at intersections, or they'd be run off the road, single vehicle. And predominantly, it involves speed and inattentive driving. So we're looking at, you know, what can we do, and across the state, and the state's got a big strategic safety plan out right now, actually for review and comment at this moment. So I think last year, we had six fatals on our county road system last year, I think the previous year was like four, three, three, and four, something like that, something in the range. And so when you look at those specifically, and so the reporting is, is really important, and, and maybe I'll let Steve comment on this a little bit, for us to really kind of glean information, because they're not that often, what specifically happened, you know, in them? So the more data that's in those reports, you know, we can get that information. So any, you know, if we had an uptick of two fatals in a year, you know, that would kind of skew what we're seeing here. And because they're so random, it's kind of hard to predict, even though I think we've done a really nice job on kind of picking off over the last dozen years, probably plus, in some of these critical areas, and want to continue to do that moving forward. I don't know if you have any more?
Yeah, so I'll just add a little on, on specific trends we're seeing in the crash data. So on page sixteen, this slot, this slot breaks out, the county system, fatal and serious injury crashes going back to twenty-sixteen, just a couple areas I wanted to highlight. So impairment, sixteen percent of our fatal or serious injury crashes involved an impaired driver. Unlicensed, there was thirteen percent of them involved in unlicensed drivers, that could be either someone who doesn't have a driver's license, or someone who is driving with a suspended or revoked license. Other areas, distracted driving, so five percent of the crashes involved a distracted driver. So, so really what I wanted to hit at with that is, it's, it's a human issue that we need to find a way to solve, you know, engineering, education, enforcement, you know, there's a lot of different avenues that need to focus on to get at this.
John, I have a quick question on that. So your intersections show fifty-two percent. Do we also have a secondary, like, if distracted was involved with that? Or does it just show up as intersection?
No, so that would, it would show up as both, if there was an intersection and distracted driver.
Yeah, several, several of these, and, and, and maybe Steve can comment on filling out crash reports, because you look at this on, on page sixteen, and you might have, it could be several categories, it could be somebody that's unlicensed speeding, a younger driver, they're impaired, and they're on a motorcycle.
Right.
So, I mean, it's a whole host of these things, and we're getting from the crash reports, you know, so it's critically important that they're, fill out as much as they can in those to be able to extract that information, and then start to draw some, you know, comparisons or conclusions with that data, so.
So, like Tony mentioned, the, the phrase random really fits for our serious crashes and fatalities. Now, we don't have those hotspots in reference to the, the harmful events, so generally in those reports, they list two contributing factors, and then there'll also be a first harmful event. So your first harmful event may have been a vehicle cross the center line, why did it do that? Well, it hit a patch of ice, and what happened next? Well, the driver was looking at his phone. So it'll be a multitude of, of reasons why that crash may have happened. The one thing that I think we do a good job of here is when we have a serious crash or fatality, I'll get an email from Mark Callahan, and he'll want to know specifics. He'll have the, the crash data, or he'll want me to find it for him, so he can see what boxes are checked, but he'll also want to know what's in our narrative report, what, what are the box checking, not, what story are they not telling? And I think that's, that's great, so that. But he'll also want to know what's in our narrative report, what what are the box checking, what story are they not telling? And I think that's that's great, so that we don't just look at yes, no questions before, you know, engineering decides to make changes.
So so a quick question on that. So I I get you trying to capture things on a form across the state, across the country, whatever. And then I'm going to say, our guy, county is calling you to get the narrative. Is that common practice for highway folks to now intermingle with and like, hey, tell me the, where was the full story here?
I honestly couldn't speak for, not that's common, but that's my experience here in Scott County. There's been a serious incident and they have the data in front of them and they just want to make sure, is there anything underlying? That we don't see here? And sometimes I might be able to provide, well, it says here in the narrative report that these three things were also involved, that maybe didn't have anything to do with the actual crash. Maybe maybe the person who crashed was under a severe amount of stress that day for whatever reason caused them to operate the vehicle in a manner that they normally wouldn't. Maybe it's not the roadway's fault, like like they're saying earlier, maybe there's a human error here.
Yeah.
But I can communicate some of those things at times.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. That very good question. We do so all of our crashes go into a database that is with MINDOT. And so across the state it goes in there. So we're all kind of pulling out, comparing those apples to apples. So but it's garbage in, garbage out.
Right.
So if people aren't reporting property damage crashes, for example, we don't have that information.
Yeah.
But as Steve said, I think the narrative is critically important, because, you know, that's somebody that's been on site and they said, this is what I I'm seeing. I've I've talked to driver one and they said this, you know, all of that is in there, which is more than just checking the boxes and in these categories. So those things I think are critically important for us on kind of the engineering side and kind of we need to do something out there.
Well, and that was going to be my part B to that question is, you know, if it's not commonplace or even if for us it is. So that we would document those findings or contextual observations in that same database from MINDOT?
It'd be in our, it'd be in our own.
Okay.
Yeah.
So just trying to make these numbers look like, oh, my goodness, I'm never going to drive through an intersection again because I fifty-two percent, you know. But the reality is like, oh, they're looking at their phone, they're, you know, putting the full story together to know what. So we would have that in our own highway database?
Yes.
I have, and you actually did answer one of my questions I had about this data on page sixteen. And obviously, Public Health Director, we are very interested in the human aspect and how to try and prevent some of these things. And I think it's certainly a way that we can work together. And I know a few months ago I reached out to Lisa Fries and said, as I was driving in, I think it was one oh one, there was a message about driving under the influence of cannabis. And I thought that that was such a great place that where we could partner. One of the things I would like to see in some of this data, particularly under the impairment, do you have this data broken down by types of impairment? Was it, was it alcohol? Was it cannabis? Was it opioids? I think, and I suspect that as cannabis becomes, as we're moving forward to with legalization and Anna Has becomes more accessible, that we'll see more there. So that would be data that would be very interesting to track to see if the accessibility of cannabis leads to more fatal and serious injuries. And if we could get that data broken out by that, then we can maybe do some work in the prevention and messaging area as well as, you know, working with teens on inattention, et cetera. So are there any specific plans in place to address those human error types of vehicle issues? And is that a place where we can maybe meet and discuss of how we can do some more there?
Yeah, no, that's, that's a great comment. One of our comments that we just submitted actually yesterday to MINDOT's Strategic Highway Safety Plan, what was that piece in particular is the education piece. And so then looking at ourselves, what can we do here? I mean, there's, there's kids now that they leave high school and they're not even licensed yet. So there's things like that that they're delaying. And I think that education piece, John had mentioned, unlicensed drivers has really spiked up. And again, like, like, what is that? Is it suspended license or they simply haven't had a license yet and they're driving? Whatever that is, but I think that education piece is a is a huge component. And I think we could look at what can we do here within Scott County with all of our partners? Schools, police, you know, all of that, what can we do? And it's really kind of a life cycle thing, where we kind of look at the the early driver, the the new driver. And then we always look at when somebody's elderly and they're still driving, you know, should they retake their license? What is that education piece and what's kind of in between them? Because we're probably all guilty of probably not driving as we should, you know. So how do we get that out? Either some sort of education, media, whatever that is. But I think it is kind of a missing component in our society.
If I can jump in really quick, just on a state level, going back a little bit. Fatalities have leveled off and are even increasing a little, and we've been noticing that trend. And it's troubling. We've we've had our towards zero death goal that we've been moving to. And where our discussion has gone on a state level is that got us some great improvements. We had, we saw fantastic decrease in fatalities over the years. Now that we've leveled out, what is next? And the next thing we're talking about is more of a safe systems approach, which gets back to what Tony was mentioning and really trying to think about that redundancy beyond just the engineering. Is it a safe driver? Do they know all the rules? Do they have that education? Is it a safe vehicle? Are they buckling up? Are the brakes working as they're supposed to, APS, all that? If they happen to go off the road, did we give them a recoverable slope? So it's really trying to provide that redundancy and say, okay, where where can we look at this? And how can we help people so that if they make a mistake, or rather, when they make a mistake, it's not a fatal mistake? And there is something in there that prevents the fatal. So that's what we're talking about as a state level. And I think that will encompass more than just the engineering and get into some of the education and other pieces that you were just talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a comment, maybe a question follow-up on that. Page sixteen, the the data here is a collection from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty-four, which I find not very helpful or informative, because the important thing is to know what are the trends in different categories? For example, in that window you've got there, speed is only twelve percent. But I think if we were to see that year, I think the speed would be much higher than twelve percent. But I'd like to know what it is. I think the speed and the state numbers that I've seen have, speed is much higher than this. But and that's year by year. And so my concern is, and just anecdotally, I drive on the freeway, you know, system quite a bit. And I see excessive speed and I see very little enforcement. I mean, when I say excessive, I'm talking eighty miles plus an hour on, you know, one sixty-nine and, you know, that's my main one I go on. But it would be on all the freeways. But so I, so that would be something would be helpful to know, you know, what are the current trends? How, what, where are we at on distracted or speed year by year? Because if it comes down to speed, I've said at the tab, and usually when I say this, I'm the first to get a ticket. I'm kidding. I haven't gotten a ticket. I've got a warning, but but, you know, I don't think we're having seen the kind of enforcement that we would expect as a society. I mean, you know, if I see, if I drive two hundred miles and I see people zipping by and I never see anybody pulled over, you know, that are going eighty, ninety miles an hour, I mean, it's it's crazy.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Haller. That is, so that's the, there's two things that we hit on in our comments back on on MINDOT's plan. And it's those two things, it's education and law enforcement. And it's it's definitely missing. I think we're, we all recognize when we're driving down the road and you see a law enforcement, your hands go to two and ten, you turn on the radio, you adjust your rearview mirror and you pay attention. That's just natural. Right. And I don't think anybody wants to live in a police, police state, you know, everywhere we go. But I think the presence is critically important. And it seems to be the presence or, you know, ticketing and forcing, you know, all of that. And, you know, I think that's, that's has has been missing as well. So I mean, those are the two things that we kind of hit on in our comments.
Well, and the hard part is, anecdotally speaking, if you drive on thirty-five, if you happen to be going north, that's where they're at. And I don't know that the hard way.
That's with law enforcement?
Oh, boy.
Well, you're taking the wrong way then.
Me, I guess so. I'm on the one sixty-nine. But I mean, but you're right. I mean, it's, it depends on, can't be everywhere all at once, but.
Yeah, you're right. And then what we were reviewing in their plan was a five-year plan, so a little shorter window, you know. So most recently, and the the speed and inattentive driving were the two things that stuck out in their data.
Something I've gathered, I don't know if it's hundred percent accurate, but that COVID sort of
Oh, yeah.
jacked up the speed. There was less cars, so people felt they could go faster and they probably haven't slowed down since. Is that kind of true for the state perspective?
Yes, I would say that's very accurate, just as you said. Most of the traffic disappeared in COVID and the people who were still driving had wide-open, multi-lane roads with nobody else. And they could theoretically go as fast as they wanted. And it appears that mentality has stuck around, even as traffics are returning to normal. We're still seeing issues like that. So I would say COVID has a a lasting impact in terms of speeds and that driver mentality.
Can I ask, Mr. Chair, how do we cure that?
That's the question, isn't it? And a very good one that, like I said, we're working on. I don't have the answer for you. But that's where, as we look at the safe system approach, we're trying to figure out, we're going to have to attack it from multiple angles, which is going to involve everyone, education enforcement, engineering, you know, all the way around. And just, I'll even reflect it back to the people here, we all think we're good drivers. I go to any room, ninety percent of the people say they're great drivers. That's just not the case, at least not all the time. So it's back to an individual as well, what am I doing to be a safe driver?
But, Mr. Chairman, I think technology should play a role. We're behind other countries in enforcement of speed and how we do it. Our law enforcement officers have a lot of other really important things that they need to be doing as well. And so are there better ways through technology of the vehicles or other ways to detect speed that other countries use that seems to be very effective? And we haven't gone there yet.
Right.
But we need to maybe leave speed and safety, because we have a guest here to talk about economic development and the other part of transportation.
Let's do it.
Okay. My first question is for Greg. Can you tell me about some of the economic and safety impacts that Scott County's road network have had on CHS?
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank, thank you for this opportunity, not only today to provide feedback, but I was running Savage for many years and I was involved, was invited to a lot of the meetings and the development of this corridor. Very much appreciated that and I really felt like they did, they took the time to engage the business community and really sincerely get that feedback. And I, so I've been traveling in this corridor since nineteen eighty-six, when I first started working out at Savage Terminal here. I live in St. Paul. So as far as the economic impact, unfortunately, I can't say that we've seen a benefit in that way, but that's got nothing to do with the corridor. It's more to do with the grain markets. Our historical numbers are down, not only us, but Cargill, Riveland as well. Where that goes in the future, who knows, right? There's so many factors involved there. But from a safety standpoint, it's, for us, it's been nothing short of phenomenal. For years and years and years, not only for employees, but for our, the grain trucks coming into town. By separating that grade, it it just made a world of difference. I watched for years trucks having to pull out in front of traffic just to get, you know, especially coming out of our our lots at Dakota Avenue and specifically. They were forced to pull out in front of traffic to get going back east and just hoping that the people were paying attention and hit the brakes. Otherwise they'd be sitting there all day. The same thing with our employees. So that flyover there, I thought was fantastic. I remember being involved in meetings, there was four different options they were looking at, and I thought they picked the right one. Another thing I'm very impressed with is they even factor in heavy haul that we do in and out of our property. So I talked to my counterparts, not anything negative from them. And especially our, our, our drivers, our customers, a lot of those, those are farmer producers. No complaints, which is really good, because, you know, you know how it is and you, and everybody in this room understands that. You hear a lot of things when things don't go well. You don't hear much when things do go well. And by having that, that silence, the economic part of it for us isn't, you know, I think that will only help in the future as our, as we're challenged with moving product around the world. But so my, my hat's off to everybody involved with that, because I, I think it's fantastic. I don't work out here on a daily basis anymore. But and I, sometimes I still pass that frontage road because I've got the old route in mind, but I got to turn around and go back. But it's fantastic. So I can't say enough good about it and about the process again, so.
One last question before we turn it back to the board, but looking at page seventeen and page eighteen. How does this data inform your decision making for the future expansion of the principal arterial system?
Well, I think if you take a look at especially the job data, you will see a very high correlation with the one sixty-nine corridor and where drop growth has occurred in the county. I think locational decisions of businesses expanding, trying to get employees in, trying to get product in. They like to be on a corridor where they can get in and out quickly. The interchanges, I think, have helped that. And we continue to see that growth in the future. If you look at the regional forecast, we'll have to see if they bear out. But they also are banking on the same trend to continue. Property values show a little bit different story. It's not quite as dramatic. But you are seeing growth along the border. But the rest of the county actually is keeping up with the property value increase along the corridor. And I think that's because the improvements like interchanges improve accessibility for people getting on and off the highway system. They improve safety. And so people are willing to live two or three miles or further off the main corridor because of those improvements if they need to get and use the principal arterial system. In terms of the future, we have, we have less freeway corridors to build upon, but we have principal arterial corridors that are going to be a little bit mixed. County Road seventeen, County Road forty-two, County Road eight are all part of our vision. And as we invest in those corridors, we need to think about mobility in particular as we're designing them.
Katie, can I ask one quick, one more quick question? I'm burning, dying to know. On page twelve, it's the means of transportation to work. And it really shows that less people are driving along to work, which is really what we want. One thing that is missing from here and is probably because it's negligible is the number of people that bike to work in Scott County. I think in two thousand and twenty-three, it was zero, in two thousand and twenty-two, point three. Two thousand and twenty-one, zero, two thousand and twenty, point one. This is from also from ACS data, American Community Survey. So how, from the public health perspective, we want people to bike to work, we want people to be more active. So how can we make Scott County more bikeable?
So we've been very diligent over the last fifteen years or so, surely, since Leslie came on as our administrator in in putting trails along all of our county roads when we have projects as part of any development that comes along and on both sides of our county road as well, when we have those opportunities to do so. Sometimes there might be some constraints that we can't quite accomplish that. But where we can, we put our trail system, we've got a, an expanding regional trail system as well. Connected with our parks and and beyond that, directing the Union Junction Trail right now as well. So and we work with our our city partners as well. So years ago, it was such that we'd build a trail along a roadway or a sidewalk, whatever that is, and then we'd turn all the city and cities. And maybe not quite taken care of long-term. So we have since changed our partnering with them and we're responsible lifecycle fifty percent with that. So when we build it, it's fifty-fifty even and all maintenance activities, including replacement sometime in the future, is a shared responsibility to try to ensure that we've got walkable communities and connections between communities on our trail system as well.
Craig, what about the, one of the things maybe you, from your regional work, how people group their trips? That, that's part of the issue with the work commute, isn't it?
And maybe how people answer the question, too. I mean, if it's a nice day and they live near their work, they may bike to work, but, you know, three quarters of the time they may choose to drive, and they just put drive instead. So there may be some of that. But, and it's also, you know, our land use is kind of a suburban area, you know, some where people live, and the jobs are not necessarily right, you know, in close proximity either. So it's, there's probably a variety of factors, but I think, you know, we need to be able to try to provide a safe, safe combination for those that want to bike to get to work. I think that sometimes is a, you know, factor people think about, you know, is, is it, I can ride my bike, but is it really safe to get there as well? So, so I think there's a whole variety of factors on why people may not choose to bike to work.
Any final comments from the panelists? All right. Well, I will turn it back to Mr. Chair. Thank you for the time.
Thank you so much. Thank you, panel, for being here. Mr. Overly, thank you for coming. The safety's huge right there, but part of me misses that lineup. It's like a changing of the times, changing of the seasons, you always do, but the safety, yeah, far outweighs that. Mr. Fisick, am I getting that right?
Bisek.
Bisek, I knew it was, was, thank you for being here as well.
Thank you.
And I do think our roads are pretty darn good. And I'm driving around in a one-ton pickup, so I know which roads are bad and which roads aren't. One's ours, one's yours that comes to mind. That's how I know, was it PQI? Is that Payment Quality Index? Is that the, I can tell you PQI with driving that pickup, especially empty. Members, any questions? I've got a few questions, but I know we're trying to move through. Yes, please.
Yeah, Chair. On page eight is the graph of 169 and the issues on 169, and I see through Shakopee on, between County Road 69 and 21. It's a really green, which has the impression that it's a safe, safe corridor with less crashes. I don't know if Shakopee would really agree with that, especially during weather events and that type of thing. So how is this determined, the colors and the safety? And maybe that's Mr. Bryant, or I'm not really sure. How is that determined of that that's the green?
So I can speak to that a little bit. So I went through and calculated crash rates on all of these different segments. So the green represents a crash rate that's both below the critical crash rate and below the statewide average crash rate. So the yellow would be below the critical crash rate, but above the statewide average crash rate for similar roadways. And then the red would be above the critical crash rate. And that's basically the threshold that we're looking for, like when making a project decision, is when that critical crash rate is, or when the crash rate is above that critical crash rate.
Okay.
Well, and I'm just gonna, unless you have another question, I was dovetailing that, because in 2000, it must have been 16, one of the debates was like, hey, everyone choose, you know, what county road needs to be changed in your opinion? You know, we're all, you know, bright-eyed, bushy-tailed run. And I said, well, it's not a county road, but I can tell you exactly what road. That one, in that exact stretch right there, that 169 between, you know, it's probably even tighter than that, but, I call it harmonic imbalance. I don't know what it's called, but like, I feel like I'm going to Canterbury, trying to win a race. There's something, and is that one, is that one scheduled to be totally changed, did I hear, in the next number, three, four, or five years? 169 between like Marystown and, and basically, oh, there's something funky. I don't know what it is. There's something funky with that road. I know we didn't come damn bushy, but that is, like I said, there's two roads that I know, that's one of them, and the other one's 82, which I know is going to get programmed. There's something funky with that stretch of road. I don't know what it is.
We do have a project on that one coming up, pavement preservation, so we're not expanding. We're not going to do what it is to try to get to the ride quality and fix that.
Well, I told my kids when they're, well, they're still younger, but I'm like, hey, if it's snowing, if somebody spit on that surface, if somebody sneezed at it, if they looked at it with watery eyes, avoid it, because there's something with the friction and whatever, we don't need to get into that right now, but avoid that stretch when there's any kind of moisture on that road.
But the data shows it's below the statewide crash limit, and that is very clear and has been clear. You might not like the ride quality, but it still is a safe road to travel on.
In the summer, yeah, we don't need to debate this, or maybe we do, but, yeah, I don't think the city of Shakopee would agree with that, but that's a whole nother story. I do think, generally speaking, our roads are, I would call them amazing, in the county and the state, almost Cadillac. If you go to other states, you're like, holy cow, my young drivers don't have to, I don't know if we can keep up with that, but that's a whole nother story. They're good roads. Yes?
Some of that, that you referred to, that the deck of that road is slated for a project when? It's coming up?
20?
28, I believe?
I was gonna say 27.
Okay.
27 or 28?
Okay, all right.
Depends on, we're on a fiscal year, which is offset, so it's, I'm not sure which calendar year.
Before the greenhouse gas or after? Sorry, I was with your MINDOT commissioner the other day. Any other questions?
I have one more question, and this is for Greg. CHS has traffic and moves material down the Minnesota River and also on Highway 13. Off the top of your head, since this isn't really the topic, but how much, how much is used, how much is the Minnesota River used for moving them in comparison to Highway 13?
Well, it varies by year. For instance, everything, we're pretty steady on our volume of trucks coming in and out of the plant. What varies is the mode that it goes out, either by rail or river. For instance, last year, we've been doing mostly rail, outbound rail. This year, now we're back to the river. So it's always a competing market, depending on where the product is needed, you know, and rail freight, barge freight, and all that kind of thing. It's a, it's a moving target. But what's consistent is the amount of trucks have been coming in and out the last year, probably, we're doing probably about 20, 20, 25,000 trucks annually, Cargill, Riveland. It may double that between all three of them, but, so the truck's consistent. Like I said, what varies is what, whether it goes out on rail or river.
Okay, thank you.
One last question. Tony, maybe I'm reading this wrong. Page 14 and 15. 14 looks like we are below average on crashes per million vehicle miles traveled, and then 15 looks like we're maybe well above, or certainly above, the trend on serious and fadals. Like, what's the, am I reading that right? And how do those reconcile?
No, you're correct. And this is the one that we do want to focus on moving forward, is this, and getting at to where these fadals are, or serious injury crashes, if there's any patterns with these. So kind of understanding data, where these happen. Oftentimes, they are random, so some of this, like, you know, I mean, we had, we had two fadals last week, you know, one at a signalized intersection on Trump Avenue 169 in Jordan. We're building an interchange. Hopefully, that goes away, those type of crashes. And the other was a run off the road. So like we, like I said earlier, you know, those are kind of the two critical areas, and it involved a pedestrian. It was, it was very unfortunate and kind of ironic, somebody walking clearly off the roadway gets hit by somebody running off the road. So just really odd, but, so it's those types of things. It's like, what could have been done differently?
Right.
In that pedestrian crash in particular.
Well, and wasn't not just kind of like that a little bit? There was fadals there, but it was like, didn't meet warrants, but it was just, I don't know, the run, there was this drunk, I think there was some substance and distracted driving a few years ago that led to fatal. So it's like factoring those in and weighing those correctly, and, but at the end of the day, if it needs a signal, it needs a signal, right?
Right. Yeah, there's only, you know, you can only engineer so much, you know, but what there is, where there's patterns of things.
Yes.
You know, and is there a solution for those patterns? And, you know, so like down in Jordan, you know, a lot of high-speed crashes there, and they, you know, it's not going to end well when that happens.
Right.
But, you know, with that interchange, there will be crashes, maybe even more, because you've got a lot more kind of interaction on the side streets and things like that, but lower speed, more property damage type crashes.
Right, yeah. All right, good. Any other questions? Thank you so much, panel. I know we were kind of rushing through this at the earlier meeting, so thank you for your persistence in hanging in there. I think we're, number seven, item number seven, Community Reports Commissioner Updates, maybe we'll just hand those in and writing email, whatever. The only thing I will say about that is many of us have been and are continuing going down to St. Paul to try to talk to our legislators about the crazy cost shift slash, what's the phrase? The mandated property tax increase is what they're basically, not basically, what they're talking about down there.
Could I make a comment on that, please, Mr. Chair? Thank you. Barb Doll and I have been weekly for the past three weeks, working with a group of county and DHS folks as we look at those cost shifts and increases to property tax levy. I think the group has found some avenues to explore, to consider, that, you know, don't alleviate it or make it all better, but are at least some progress. So I would just really, rather than have an hour-long summary of that today, before you meet with folks in the next week or two, if you're interested in talking about that with our legislators, which I would strongly, strongly ask you to, please touch base with Barb Doll or I, just about that, because it is, it is significant. There's going to be some room and some discussion about it in these last, last weeks of session, and we can tell you a little bit, some of the ideas we're discussing, that'll hopefully be, some groups will be talking to the chairs of human services committees in the next, next week about, about their appetite for those changes.
Well, and I have a meeting tomorrow morning, so for today, yes, we need to talk today. I know some of us are going down Monday, yeah.
Just a quick, we had the RTF meeting that we've been waiting months for to
Right.
hear what the different
Yes.
partners are. Shakopee and Savage are out. They're gonna end at 27, they'll be doing something else. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean, for example, Savage would never use the training center. In fact, Chaska, or Carver County, excuse me, pulled out, and they use the training center almost as much, but not as a partner. So that was one thing, those two out. The rest want to move forward. In fact, there's quite a range of project level that others wanted to see. County was at the low end of the spectrum. It was kind of a downer, they were disappointed. I've asked Chris Meyer to be the champion, the cheerleader, the, the go-getter for this, for the training center to take that role. He'd been offered to buy him some pom-poms.
Nice. Wow, that's visual.
That's it, that's into my comments.
Thanks for saying that. All right, looking down on my left, County Administrator Update.
So I have a couple things. First off, I just want everybody to be aware that our own Suzanne Ernstin is going to be honored today as the Child Welfare Award recipient for the State of Minnesota, recognized by that group. I think it's pretty remarkable and very deserving, all the work that she's done, from signs of safety to FRCs, to how we work in the children's arena and bringing that together. It has just been tremendous work, and the grants that she has worked to bring in to try some of this prevention work is, it's extraordinary, and she's being recognized this afternoon. Secondly, I'd like to recognize all of our staff. We challenge them with a goal of raising $5,000 during the food show. They actually raised $8,125, far exceeded it, and the county board then contributed an additional $1,000 out of their own pockets. So thank you to you five as well, and for matching the work that they did. I can give the names later. And then finally, the boardroom begins its refurbishment. I think it's tomorrow or the day after, and so the sound and the cameras and all these things we struggle with, this is about its tenure rotation for some updates coming. So we won't be in here for a little bit. Hopefully, it'll be ready by the next board meeting.
And going back to our crew, we got a passionate, generous, giving crew of folks, which is awesome. And I'm working on an email to that effect, so that was fun. That was a lot of fun.
They did an outstanding job. Every division, the sheriff's office stepped up, the county attorney's office stepped up, facilities, you got to whack a golf ball at Troy's head. That was kind of fun. So, yeah, there were all kinds of activities and events that took place over that, that month to raise those funds.
It's fun. Thank you. Looking at my right, County Attorney Update, or any kind of recess, hopefully not.
You've probably heard enough of them attorneys today.
Yeah, we've heard a lot. We've heard a lot. Okay, before we adjourn, we are going to head over to a workshop, well, after we adjourn, to hear from the Scott County Egg Society, the Fair Board, and from Fish, Families and Individuals Sharing Hope, from Shaco Schools, from Extension, the Scott County Historical Society, and the Scott Soil and Water Conservation District. And again, this meeting, County Board meeting, always open to the public. Workshops, always open to the public. Please come. All right, that's where we're headed next.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.